And you'll catch up. You didn't answer. Okay, are we waiting for anyone else virtually or anything Erica? Okay. Call the world please. Mitchell here. Vice Mayor Bravo.
Here.
Councilman Santin.
Here.
Councilman Bahad.
Here.
Councilman Vasquez who's not present. There is a quorum present. All right. Um, let's uh please stand if you're able to and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone that's here joining us and um those that are joining us virtually to our city council workshop. This is a workshop on the Gateway District. And we will start with um. I'm gonna start with open forum because I'm not sure how long um I do want to hear if anyone wants to speak um please. This is the time to come up if there's anything you'd like to say. And please limit your um comments to three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience? That wants to come up and say anything? Anyone virtually?
No ones online.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll close the open forum. And we'll go to um presentation of recommendations for the Gateway District by our planners. CG and A. And Sylvia.
I don't know how close. Can you hear me okay? All right. Um. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and um council members. Thank you so much for having me tonight uh for holding this workshop. Um. As you know, um. It's taking now a little longer to get here. Um, but the work is um at least the foundation of it is is done. Um, we had what I think was a very successful joint meeting. With the um zoning and planning board and the architectural review board. Um, Antonio was there, so he can attest to the fact that it was a very um. Uh, very robust discussion. Um, and I think that the two boards enjoyed meeting together and they talked about, you know. Whether they could do it again. Uh, whether it could become part of the um. Sort of routine way of business for reviewing projects. Um, as um and move forward, which I actually think is a good idea. You know, when reviewing development. Uh, supposedly the two boards have to review new developments and uh I'm not sure how active the architectural review board is. Uh, but it probably would be very dynamic to have them meet together to review a project together. So. Uh, in any case, uh, I'm going to be sharing my screen in just a moment. The way that I want to do this tonight is sort of walk you a little bit through the background. Um, and then um just um. Talk about how we have um made changes to certain sections more than others. It's been pretty wholesale. And I have this kind of the way I did it with the boards. Uh, I have some stopping points where I am throwing some questions out to you. For discussion doesn't have to happen in that moment, but just sort of, you know, maybe think about them if you want, if you want to stop at that moment and and talk about them, that's okay. Um, and I do have um. Um. Slides at at those stopping points uh with a summary of what we heard on the same issues from the boards. So that's kind of how I think it's gonna work for us.
Hey Sylvia, and if you excuse me one minute while we cause we'll forget later, um Erica and um JC, could you look into that recommendation of? Having the two boards meet together, see if that's possible. Um, I know the architectural review board hasn't met. As frequently as the other one, but you know, I'm very much for tapping into the professional expertise and. Um. An interest of our residents. So um. If we could see for a future meeting, if you could let us know if that's a possibility and how that would work before we forget since Sylvia brought us the recommendation. Thank you.
Mayor, they required to meet or not required, but but there's a suggested number of times that they meet. Do those do those align? Do they have the same number of meetings that they should be meeting?
Don't. They are um meeting as needed.
The architectural.
The architect.
Correct. Well, what about the?
Board of adjustment is whenever um a project comes before them, that's when they would convene.
If there's an agenda, then they'll meet.
Okay.
Uh, and I think that's. Perhaps uh part of the problem. If you want to call it a problem, it's it's not really a problem. Uh, in the sense that, you know, there's, there's, there's no rule or provision being broken by that, you know, if you don't have. An agenda, then there's no need for you to meet. But um, you know, we have um some uh provisions in the code for different kinds of reviews that happen in the different districts. And particularly in the large scale districts, if you will, like uh Gateway and uh the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street uh quarter and. You know, potentially at some point in the future, the Abraham Track District. Um. You have uh some architectural standards. In there and you have zoning and planning and development. Sort of standards that you have to review. It would be um dynamic, uh I think, to have them together rather than meeting separately. And I'm not even sure if the architectural review board has met in the past to review these projects. These kinds of projects are not, I I I'm not sure. Um, but you know, they, I think that they felt that it would be useful. And I I agree with them. So that's just, you know.
Okay, and is is Heidi or Roger?
Roger.
Joining?
Roger is.
So Roger, if you could, for the future, just look into that, please, and assist. Um.
Good evening, council members, Mayor. Yeah, absolutely. I will absolutely do that. I'm covering very temporarily um just uh for the record. Uh, Heidi should be joining shortly, but she's tending to a personal matter right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Who who can uh who can authorize me to share my screen?
Oh, um. Uh, Brian? Can you allow co-host for Sylvia, please? Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Okay. All right, so. First.
Exactly. Did we? Did the lights just a little bit? I think it shows up better on the camera for the. The residents that are.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so first um I wanted to remind you of the goals that we set for ourselves with this. Um, update, if you will. Uh, the first is to look at the purpose and the vision of this district and try to um improve the clarity of the statements that represent. Uh, those two things. Uh, generally speaking, clarifying the language, there's a lot of ambiguity today in a lot of those uh sections of the code. Also see if we could improve the flow and organization. Of the section. I personally, when I first read it, I found it a little confusing, kind of had me jumping back and forth between sections and didn't feel like it was um. Very logically organized. Um, so. That became one of our goals. Uh, there were some uh some usage of terminology that was either a little outdated or. Um, a little um inaccurate, so we also looked at that. Uh, we, we really tried to improve the incentive system. But as you know, we have some limitations as to how much we can do. Some of them are um, some of those limitations are set by the charter. So. There might be other things uh that you all can think of that perhaps me being a little less familiar haven't thought about. Um. So, you know, that that'll be a question for all of you as a matter of policy. And uh, and generally, you know, to strengthen the city's position. In um the uh development approval process to achieve the vision and the mission. I know that I've heard a lot in these past months that we have been here, a lot of conversations surrounding sort of, you know, a little frustration on your part that perhaps. You know, um, this, this um. Um, district as it's written right now with the incentives and with the procedures, et cetera, did not give you enough clarity and perhaps not enough. Um, clear authority to do certain things or to um ask for certain things. In a, in a way that helped you achieve your goals. And so that became one of my most important uh objectives here. Um. This is just uh simply the sort of table of contents of this uh whole section and there's a few. Uh. New subsections that you'll see that we have added. In particular. Uh, we have split up the section on architectural design because I felt that there were a lot of things in there that were not really architectural oriented. It was more like side planning. So I split those up, so it was a little bit clearer, the things that sort of the principles that you have to follow for side planning versus what you have to. Um. Apply for the building architecture. Um, we have renamed the incentive system. Um, uh, enhance design and development quality, FAR bonus, that's really what it is. Um, so um, you know, there it was like um excellence of like, I can't remember right now exactly what it is, but you know. I felt that it was a little disingenuous to call it that because there was so little there to actually achieve excellence. There were a lot of things, there are a lot of things in there right now. That are so basic that you should not be calling them excellence. You should be just demanding that those things be done. So um, that's. Kind of the the rationale for that. Um. We also um. Uh, um, added a section on development agreements, something that we're introducing uh for you. Um. And um, you know, hopefully uh. Roger or Heidi, if and when she joins, um can back me up when we talk about that. Um, and then, you know, added a period of validity for projects. So in other words, if you approve something and doesn't begin construction within a certain time and doesn't complete the project within a certain time, there's. There's nothing in there right now that says, you know, somebody cannot keep this forever. You know, so um, few things like that. So the way that I'm going to frame each one of these issues is sort of talking about what the current uh. Language is or what the issue with the current language is and what we are trying to do. Um, reflecting our approach. So for the purpose. The uh current issue is that the wording of that purpose statement is really very generic. It could be anywhere USA. And it really does not speak with enough clarity about the city's vision for this district, at least not the way that I have heard you all speak about it and. Uh, and under and have understood it. Uh, so what we have tried to do there is refining and tailor the purpose to ensure that these vision and goals come through more clearly. Um. I I don't have the language specifically here, and if there's something that you want to, you want me to put up, I can do that, but you know, I'm just kind of speaking, you have copies of the of the proposed language, so. Uh, that's why I'm not necessarily putting it in front of you. Um, boundary of the district. So um, just, this is from a very mechanical point of view. The um current ordinance basically just have a little, little aerial photo without. The boundary defined in it. And in the text, it's just a whole bunch of legal descriptions for each one of the individual lots. And um, in looking through that list, we realized that there were actually some errors. And um, and and we were very confused as to, you know, like going back and trying to look them up and, you know. So um, our recommendation there is to actually use a map. That has the, you know, I have something on the screen there for you. This is what we have now in the draft, but this doesn't necessarily have to be that. It could be. It could be an aerial photo with a boundary, but it could also be, you know, your zoning map with a boundary. And uh better, you know, just everything labeled so that you don't have to be looking into different places at the same time. Streamline description in the text. Of what the boundaries are represented by the 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 streets that are joined the district. Um. So uh that's again, something that is just very simple and mechanical and easily solved. Uh, one of my discussion points with the boards and that I wanted to talk to you about is we have inside. The gateway as it is um delineated today. Uh, the block on Canal Street. Um. Uh, with last thirty to. Okay, this is fifty-four, seventy-eight, um eighty-eight and I don't know four. Those are actually, the underlying zoning is multifamily. And I don't know. We have tried to figure it out, but we don't know whether that is an error of the zoning map, that that should have been. Um. Um. Actually CBD. Or it was, if it was always uh. And and I can understand that it might have been multifamily because there are actually some multifamily buildings there, so maybe it was done purposely, but. It makes it hard now because the language in the gateway refers only to the CBD. And so. You know, when people come and talk to us about properties that are in this area. We're not entirely sure what to tell them applies. Because it says.
That the only carve out that isn't CBD?
It's the only carve out within this area.
Day gateway that isn't. Uh, isn't underlined with.
With CBD.
With CBD.
Yes.
Wow.
And and so perhaps.
Excuse me Sylvia, is that all of that strip of Canal Street?
Yes.
The west side, all of that from the um. Um, I guess the dental office building.
Apple dent.
To the, the.
To the west.
The west.
So it's all of those.
Uh, actually. It does not.
Then include the dental or that building, but everything, there's a roadway.
An alley, there's.
The alley that enters the parking lot.
Parking behind that kind of comes out that on Canal Street, so.
Everything west of that alley.
Yeah.
Okay.
And um, and it is important because if you are going to accomplish some kind of redevelopment. A goal for that area too, then you know, there needs to be some consistency. I have right now, for example, one uh potential applicant for a property that has gone frustrated. Not the only one, actually, um, this. The, these individuals in in the audience right now have another piece of property that they're frustrated about. But um, we have one uh that has come and talked to me uh several times, trying to figure out how to redevelop within. The provisions of the gateway. Um, it's a single parcel, small. And at this point, um, he's like, well, you know. What could I do? I mean, I I I don't think I'm gonna meet the gateway requirements, so could I go by? The underlying zoning, which is multifamily. But the property is so small that it really, you know, he can't really do anything. So I think at this point, he's thinking that he's just going to replace what's there with a newer building, but exactly the same use, which is a single family. Property. And while I would prefer that they didn't do that because they do, that house is gonna be there forever.
Right.
Uh. I have no basis for denying that necessarily because the underlying zoning allows it.
Yes, right.
So uh, my question to you is, do you believe that that underlying zoning is correct? Should it be, should it be maintained as such? Should there be some kind of zoning um amendment, which I don't necessarily. I'm not suggesting that we undertake that now necessarily, because I think that, you know, we would have to consult with the property owners to make sure that they. Agree. Um. Uh, but you know, should it be CBD? Should it, should it stay? Should it be?
Sylvia, can you think of any reason why? The strategically, why that wouldn't have been?
I think it was an oversight. My, my guess, this is just speculation based on the fact that the gateway refers to. The underlying zoning as being CBD and perhaps.
I think we were all under that impression.
Yeah.
I don't.
Perhaps it it was just something that nobody really noticed. And you know, that's part of the reason why I think that we should not have a simple aerial photo representing the map because, you know, that's.
If um, if this were to be. Um, changed to be CBD, how would that impact? The current owners. There.
Um.
Should they not want to? I I guess what I'm saying, should someone be there and it's multifamily and they want to continue to be multifamily or?
They can say.
Build again as or rebuild as multifamily.
Yeah.
The CBD requirement would not limit them.
Uh, well, I mean, it would, it would be uh a mixed use, right? So that's one of the reasons why I say, you know, I don't recommend that we just make that decision tonight necessarily because it would require a little, a little bit further thought.
Meaning that they would have to have the first floor retail.
And under the, under the gateway now, mind you. You know, one question that I also have, which uh is not entirely clear to me is. If you are within the gateway, are you required to build according to the gateway? Uh, regulations or do you have the option of foregoing that and using the underlying zoning, which is what this gentleman thinks that he. Could do by rebuilding the single family house that is on his law. And and so um, you know, these are just considerations with respect to the zoning of that block. Um, but beyond that. There is another thought that I have had for a little while, and that is that this district, as it is, perhaps it is too small. I know that it's meant to be the gateway. But. There's a couple of different potential approaches, and there was quite a bit of discussion at the, at the board's uh meeting uh with respect to this. So. My thought, my initial thought was, for example, um, could we expand the gateway to encompass the lot? Uh, the block actually that is between Dakota and Market Street, which is um where that AT&T facility is. I I feel like that use is complex and very non-contributing to either the district, um, the gateway district or the CBD for that matter. You know, it's it's basically a fortress that nobody can in interface with from the street. Um, I don't know if AT&T would have any plans in the future for for that facility. Um. But being an entire block, it actually is a pretty good redevelopment opportunity because there's no assembly effort. You know, somebody. Potentially could pull come and 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 buy that property and redevelop it. Um, so one potential scenario would be. Expanding the district boundary in that direction to encompass that block. The other one was um. Expanding the district in a, in different direction, which is.
The whole thing.
South to the side of the the circle. Southwest of the circle. Um, and the other one potentially is expanded in both directions. Uh, the other. Potential approach would be to completely eliminate the overlay and just adopt. The higher standards that we have for the gateway into the entire CBD. So these are different potential scenarios. I'm not necessarily making a recommendation right now. This is really, really a policy question for all of you. But I can tell you that the joint boards uh in every single individual. Uh, when they uh spoke their, their ideas, their thoughts, uh, we had a consensus from them that. There should be a consideration for expanding the district. Um, some thought that it should be, you know, to the west, some thought that it should be to the north. Nobody said eliminated. But um, you know.
Was that discussed as a possibility?
Uh, I I I raised it, but for some reason, the, I don't think the elimination necessarily resonated. The idea of expanding did resonate. But in a way, if you think about it, um. expanding to the entire district in a way would be sort of eliminating the gateway, the need for the gateway. Um, because then you apply the same higher standard of design, of of site planning, of uh architectural um uh design to the entire district. So obviously, you know, you you need to give consideration to the character. You know, the 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 further sort of reaches of westward, it's it's a little bit less intense. Um, right now, and if you wanna keep that character, then you know, obviously, you know, you 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 may not have the same desire to apply the the um uh the standards of the gateway. But you know, all of these scenarios could be considered at this point.
When you said, yes, excuse me, one second, Councilman, um Sylvia, when you mentioned expanding it north, I think you said southwest?
Southwest, yeah.
What are you envisioning? Is it around the circle or?
Yeah, that that was kind of how it came out.
The blocks around the circle.
Yeah, exactly. Right. Yeah.
Now would that say if if we were to consider that, and this is just so we all can kind of visualize different options, um expanding it?
Actually, I have the aerial photo.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I don't know. There. So you can kind of take a look at, I don't have the propose, like any kind of proposed boundary. I I my only thought originally was the, okay, there's a little bit of a delay. The expansion in this direction with this block has been in my mind for a little while, but um
With that expansion, the first one that you have, which really um It's just the AT&T building.
That's just that block. Yeah.
We don't know, we don't have any information from them, the owners, as to anything that they have any plans or anything. I mean, it just kind of lies dormant. It's always been kind of dormant there.
Right.
Um, so if even we were to expand it, um way before that, we need to reach out to them and find out what plans they might have or something, if there's a reason for us to expand it, because
Right.
If it's gonna continue to lie dormant, I don't see the the value one way or the other.
There has been a party that has expressed some interest in that property. But I'm not sure what kinds of conversations uh they may have had or, you know, whether there are any outcomes that are worth reporting. I don't have.
Okay, and Councilman, you had a question?
Yeah, I've got, and I apologize, but I have three questions, but I think these three questions, at least for me, are gonna help kind of frame the conversation going forward. Okay, so um, I'm gonna give you all three questions and then you you answer them in whatever order. And if you wanna repeat them as we go. My first question is, when when uh when is it a recommendation? Or can you signal to us when you think something is a recommendation that you think we can act on now? Versus like a second ago, you were like, well, this is a recommendation, but I don't think you should get into it now. Because if that's the case, it's important to kind of like understand, like kind of a timeline, like you don't wanna get into this now, but this is something that we can be tackled whenever you think, right? So that's one thing in terms of like these recommendations. Another thing is, um, I'm unclear and maybe you can clarify for me. Um, what are the circumstances where you would default to the underlying zoning, right? So when, because the the gateway is is over the CBD. So what are the circumstances when when you would? Cause I think you kind of made it seem like, like like it's unclear when you would, right? And like what circumstances would cause you, cause you made a, you made a statement about if you, if you uh expand the gateway, then it's as if you don't really have a gateway. And I was kind of seeing it the other way. It's kind of like you don't have a CBD, right? Like uh is there, when you have an overlay?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm unclear about that. And then here's the third question, right? And then uh when, and and actually, it's a request. Cause I'm looking at the summary of the of the world, of the, the two uh the two boards that met together. And I see that there are some where there might have been a little bit of unease and dissent. And since you're going through your recommendations and your presentation in order, if you could let us know when there was kind of like, this is one where they kind of disagreed, rather than go through all of yours and then go through theirs. As we're going through the particular topics, if you could just say, look, this is one where they, where there was a little bit of unease.
I can tell you.
And that'll help. So but the two questions there is like how the overlying, the over district, overlying district, and how it defaults to the underlying district, and what are the circumstances for that happening? And then the first question was about like when, you know, or will you, maybe it's a request and not a question. Will you let us know when it's a recommendation that you feel like is actionable now? Versus one that you think like we should tackle at a certain time?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Um, I I can do all of those things.
Okay, please. So I'm sorry to give it to you, but I, at least for me, I think it'll help.
It's absolutely fine. I mean, for 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 the purposes of of the presentation, uh that's, you know, I kind of have that slide at at the end of each section.
Perfect.
That gives us
Okay.
And about this topic, this is what the board said, but you know, it doesn't matter when I mention it, you know, I just can skip over the slide. Um, with regards to um the issue of just sort of discussion item versus recommendation. I mean, everything that I have here right now is some sort of recommendation to you. But I think in some cases, we need more direction to go and do a little bit more research so that we can come back and say, yes, this is the way that we would go. Because you know, I, when I started, I was not intending to really do anything with the boundaries, but as we started sort of thinking about it, like, okay, the district is very small, it's got, you know, a few opportunities. There is this opportunity just sort of sitting there, you know, um, it would be great if that could become part of it. But then, you know, this idea, maybe there are other expansion venues too. Um, and so um, I don't have enough information right now to tell you which way to like, I I would say go. Um, but you know, perhaps you have some ideas based on your much deeper knowledge of sort of the dynamics of the area, uh and you can point me in the right direction.
And I would, Mayor, I would add, if if there was consensus among the planning and zoning and architectural review board with respect to thinking further about how to expand, because you mentioned that was, I think that that's something that we probably should give direction to to CGA to research a little further and maybe come back with, okay, this is the recommendation. Because if 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 both boards got together and and there was consensus about it, I think that
Well, isn't that what you're going to talk about, the different expansion? You mentioned all already.
Right.
The the possibilities of expanding it.
So
They weren't specific with any particular, they just said consideration to expanding it.
Yes.
Okay, so you're giving us
The four scenarios that we kind of laid out in front of them too, and they did not really say, go for this one or go for that one. I mean, like I, in in that, I think that they buried, some of them said, yeah, we should, we should look at that block between uh Nakota and Market. We really should look at the AT&T property. And others thought that we should actually be looking, you know, across the circle uh to the southwest. Um, so you know, I don't think there was consensus in that approach necessarily, but there was consensus in the idea that we should look at expanding the district. Okay?
True.
Now, the the one second.
I mean, I was there and yeah, it wasn't the consensus, but it was a lot of people were obviously look, talking about it. Because obviously, there's one thing that always, there's an underlying thing when you talk about the overlay. You talk about the CBD, everything kind of seems to be tied together to a certain extent. So it kind of leaves yourself open for more interpretation. So I think that, at least I feel that possibly to consider, it's just having one district. Because it just seems like you leave yourself open.
You're saying not having the overlay, just basically eliminating the overlay and
Keeping a lot of the standards and stuff.
And then upping our standards to what we want.
Right, right, right. So that was gonna be, you know, my my next uh response to Councilman ahead in terms of uh his comment regarding, you know, that I said eliminating the overlay, but you were thinking that it was sort of the other way around. I really was thinking in terms of if we basically said, we're going to apply the higher standard incorporated into the CBD and we don't need an overlay.
Sylvia, excuse me, and I'm sorry you keep interrupting you, but I think it's it's more productive for all of us to answer these questions. When you're saying the higher standard, can you give me an idea of what you're thinking of with higher standard? Is it the enhancements using that or?
Because the CBD doesn't have the same level of detail with respect to site planning, architectural design, incentives uh for certain things. Um, process, now we have spelled it out. So uh what I'm talking about is the improvements that we're proposing to the gateway. A lot of that could be incorporated into the base um set of regulations for the CBD. Not everything perhaps, but a lot of it could. So that's what I'm talking about in terms of, you know, perhaps at that point, you don't need to treat it as an overlay, it would just be part of your base CBD um zoning industry. Um
Go to the chair.
Yes.
Sylvia, what would you say? Cause I mean, I I agree with Councilman Santin, there should be all just one generalized district. I think the gateway was really kind of like a little window out to not interrupt the CBD so that other um things could come to fruition without interrupting the current um ordinance of the CBD, so people don't freak out exactly what's happening right now. But reviewing both CBD and gateway, what would you say are the top three main differences? Cause I see, I see that in the CBD and the gateway, we both have that they can have residential uses on the upper floors above retail office and related usage. Nothing about single family housing.
That's right.
So there's a house there, the only house that I think that is there that's it's a very, very old, it's like a cottage.
That's, that's the one that I'm talking about.
So yeah.
But that the zoning of that is the multifamily.
Right.
Right?
So they would redevelop into a multifamily.
They could don't have the space.
They can't.
They don't have the room. It's a very small lot. So basically with the land that they have, it it would essentially be almost like redeveloping for a single family again, because they don't have enough land to to multifamily.
I like the recommendation that you did here on this that we received back in June. It says um on line seven to eight, it says, the gateway district shall incentivize development projects that emphasize, wait, yeah. In order to provide a distinct sense of arrival to the city, the gateway district shall incentivize development projects that emphasize retail and dining experiences, pedestrian-friendly streetscapes. So I think, are we trying to make the district exactly what it is that you emphasize here on retail dining experiences to maybe get away?
Keep in mind though, Councilwoman, that um that's what the original gateway was. And then um as time went on, we had to expand the permitted uses. So we all, you know, that's what the intent was. And then as recently as what, six months ago or I I forget? So last, you know, we wound up
Change.
Changing the permitted uses. So I think the intent
Right.
Is that, but you know, realistically, is that, or I don't wanna go in that whole rigmarole again.
No, I I understand.
But what, going back to what I was saying.
Right.
If we're gonna, or or I think what we're we're leaning towards is more keeping the CBD and giving away with the gateway.
You you tell me, I mean
Because I feel like right now the gateway doesn't serve its purpose at all.
The gateway
Like we keep reverting back to the CBD. And I I think it was more for an exceptional moment at that time to do the gateway.
So um to answer your question that I'm trying to remember exactly, but you know, I think you said, could you, could you tell me the differences? So um in in terms of um, you know, some of the other things that are in this, in the gateway I I mentioned, right? So it's it's a higher standard of site plan and um 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 architectural design.
So that's one.
And um, um, oops, what happened?
Hey Roger.
I know what happened. Um. So I'm trying to go back and share my screen, but uh it's not working.
Is there more flexibility with the FAR in the gateway?
Because we have an incentive system. Uh, so I would say that perhaps it's not that we have more flexibility. What the choice was there in order to create the incentive program was to go with the lowest possible FAR and then make every every other potential increase um uh or increment an incentive-based system, right? So um in the
But that's not in the CBD, right?
That, the incentive system is not.
Right.
Right. Uh, but um, you know, one of the differences, for example, is that um the um hotels are are permitted in the CBD. They're not permitted in the gateway. That's one example of a difference. Um, but then generally speaking, it's more of like in the gateway, we wanted to we wanted to emphasize that retail and dining experience. And the language that I'm proposing doesn't say that's the only thing that we're doing, but we want to emphasize it, right? This is, this is sort of the way that we want to orient the district as much as possible. But we do have the uses and you know, there's language in there that says the CBD is the underlying. And again, going back to this idea, we have some multifamily, but the multifamily is not mentioned. The CBD is the underlying district and uses from the CBD are permitted here as well, except for hotels. Um, and then it goes beyond to say that in the gateway district, unlike the rest of the CBD, um, you can only have the retail and restaurant on the ground floor. That's not something that exists in the rest of the CBD. You can have office. Now, of course, we have diluted it a little bit because of the circumstances, as you know. Uh, but that emphasis is still there and 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 those certain restrictions are still there for the gateway. Um, so um, you know, when I'm, when I say that perhaps the consideration could be to just take some of the best pieces of the gateway incorporate them into the CBD, that's really what I mean. It's not like taking a wholesale and converting the gateway into the CBD or, you know, or
Vice versa. I feel like it's six of one and half dozen of the other. If you, if you, if you just leave the CBD, you're gonna have to make adjustments to it. You're gonna have uh elements of the gateway that you wanna, you know, the the put in. And if you have the, you know, if you have the gateway, there are things that you wanna do. Like, I feel like either way, you're gonna have to adjust it so that it's the best of both worlds, but based on what you think works best, which is
Can you do a CBD with zones? So you have the whole CBD, right?
That's kind of what you have right now.
That's what we have now.
That's kind of what you have right now, because the gateway is a section of the CBD that has an an additional layer of regulation, right? So we could do that for all of it, but you know, that's gonna be a little more complicated. We sort of have to look at the way to split the the pie, so to speak. Um, with that, with that said, um
No, I'm just saying, I think the ideal thing is to get the best of both worlds and put them together, including like the hotels. We don't want hotels and it's, we could take that part of the CBD and the new designed uh standard or whatever, but
For sure.
So, yeah, I'm up for making it one and and coming up with uh you know, the best of both worlds, I guess.
Um, okay, I'm not, I'm not sure what is going on. Uh, it might be my connection, but um I'm not sure that I am on Zoom anymore.
I do.
Oh boy.
It's Roger.
Uh
Free horn will Roger, just in case.
So uh, Mayor, members of the council, just to, just to add on to what um Sylvia was saying. I I definitely know that zoning overly districts of
Yeah.
You know, different subsections, like uh Councilmember Bravo was mentioning, uh is possible. Um, a good example actually would be some of the uh core districts that Miami-Dade County has. I think the most famous one obviously is downtown Dade Land, which has a core, which is the most intense, then edge districts and and um other sort of overlays. Uh, so that is definitely a possibility, I think. Obviously, I defer to Sylvia in terms of the expertise of the planning of that sort of system and how it would work in the CBD. Um, but I just wanted to make that comment that, yeah, that that absolutely is a possibility. Um, with that being said, um, my colleague Heidi is here. So I'm gonna be just switching the rates to her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Hi Heidi. Um, for those of you that are listening, Roger and Heidi are city attorneys.
Uh, okay, I unfortunately, I don't know why my um my Zoom app dropped me from the meeting and it's just thinking and thinking and not wanting to connect me again.
Well, we have the um, we have the, we don't have, and I guess
Do you think that's
If you can't reconnect, we'll just ask anyone. we're on us and I guess, if you can't reconnect, we'll just ask anyone audience um to follow online, if they click on the agenda package, it'll be there, but it's preferable if we could show it on the screen.
I'm connected.
As we talk.
Why don't you disconnect and reconnect?
Yeah, let's try that.
Uh apologies.
No problem.
What was that again? I'm so sorry. Um apologies, just give us one second.
Eight, six, three.
Six, three.
Nine, five, one, two.
Five, one, two.
Four, one.
Four, one. Well, I think it is that Zoom actually updated in the middle of this. Yeah, it's not.
Do you want to use my laptop?
And now I don't have Wi-Fi. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out here and connect to, that's what it is. Um So while I tried to reconnect, um again, I I mean, I think that this is something that whichever way you decide to go, but particularly if you decide to, at last, um option of um uh sort of taking bits and pieces and incorporating them together in one district or even you know, multiples of districts, that's gonna take a little while to work out exactly how it would be done. And um and so um that's one of the reasons why I was saying that we should not necessarily, I mean, you can provide me direction and then, you know, I can go and do the the research and come back with a recommendation for you, um as to, you know if 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 it is new boundaries or if it is eliminating or if it is integrating or, you know, whatever that is. Um but uh right now, um I I don't think that we can make the decision uh on an informed basis tonight, I'm just wanted to put the question before you so that you can give them consideration.
Sylvia, could you just, going back to expanding?
Yeah.
Um I'm curious as to, and I understand West, um the AT&T building, which I'm wondering too, I guess on the other side of Nakota.
Yeah.
I know there's like the preschool, are those all homes? Do you know after that?
There's four, oh fourplexes and
Pacing, South Road.
Oh multifamily.
All multifamily, okay.
They are multifamily, yes, and that's the zoning in that area.
Okay, and that's zoning for the multifamily, so it extends, okay. Um but then say on westward, the first block of Curtis, cause those are very different, say westward is very different from the first block of Curtis, which is very different from um some of the adjoining, you know, Palmetto and that each branch out of the circle is just kind of unique.
Yes.
On its own, so how do you envision? If we were to expand this, um where would the expansion be? Where, like where do you see the expansion along westward? Um the first block of Curtis is on the east side, we have some uh businesses. Homes that have been converted into businesses, but on the um west side, those are are uh multifamily units. So even on one side of the Curtis to the other side of Curtis varies greatly.
Uh right, I mean, Charlie, I haven't done a block by block analysis at this point. And again, I apologize, my computer decided to update the Zoom software as we were sitting here and now I have to restart the computer, so.
Mayor, can I just ask a question? So correct me if I'm wrong Sylvia, it, the sense I got is that that you mentioned that there was consensus on on some type of expansion?
Yes.
Uh but that you weren't ready, like uh I I I got the sense that you wanted direction from us to really analyze it some more?
Is is this something that you would want us, yeah, is this something that you would want us to explore?
Right.
Right? Because again, when I came here, um when I went to the board and when I, when I started this process it was never in my mind at that point that we would expand.
Right.
Um it was just sort of taking what you had and sort of refining it, but as we went through the exercise and looked at, you know, the opportunities for redevelopment, so if if we really want to keep the gateway and we want to create opportunities for redevelopment beyond what might exist today, there's a couple of things that you would want to do, one is, it's something I don't have right now and something that the board discussed. Um creating incentives for lot, for lot assembly, land assembly, right? We are again somewhat limited in what we can offer and maybe you have some ideas that I'm not seeing right now because typically what you would do is to offer additional density or additional FAR or additional building height. We are limited in what we can offer, because you already have the highest possible density that is allowed in your code and by your charter
Charter.
In this district, in the overlay. We have the highest possible height, except for your southern um.
The northwest.
Exactly, your su- your southern border, so to speak.
Right.
And uh we also have the highest, I believe the highest FAR. So um from that perspective, we don't have a lot of things to trade for 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 things, for other things, right? Um and so um I think that's something that that you need to keep in mind, you know, what what other kinds of things could we offer as incentives? That either don't depend on these three kinds of items, or if we were to say, well, okay, we could reconsider some of them, what would that entail? And we, I think we know that we're then talking about referendum and changing your
Talking about ballot measure.
All of that.
Changes the charter.
And I think the other thing to consider too is, you know, if we visualize, because it's one thing to be talking about this, but if you try to visualize um where this would be implemented, say for example, westward drive. Um westward drive, both sides of it, you know, have retail, commercial, but behind westward drive are all single family homes.
Exactly.
And I, and when the um gateway was proposed and um the the construction that that is going up there now, um you know, you think back to the theater property. And that was an eyesore and we had that for years and years and years, so there was an incentive to make that area much more attractive and I think we've certainly gotten that. Um I'd be hesitant to say, you know, let's go ahead and, you know, implement these, we have to be very careful because it's like I said, these are just such unique, every street leading from the circle has its own character, its own makeup, um westward drive, you know, has the residential behind every single, I can't think of anything except maybe the first block or two of, you know, where City Hall is, and then we start having right behind City Hall, right? Or the next one over, we start having single family residences, so. And then Curtis is so different and then we have very limited toward the Hook Square, it's just that Hook Square and then we get into, there's one multifamily and then it's um, yes, sir, so.
So I think, I think that that having discussions about like uh in this district, right, talking about the central business district. Uh you know, charter amendments to kind of raise height or that, I think that that that's, I think that that's a in my opinion, a bit too far for this district. I, it, again, it strikes me that that there are some, there's an incentive structure within the gateway that there is consensus, there not only, you know, among the two boards that met and CGI that we should explore expanding, you know, those incentives, right? Uh and but it's, again, it strikes me that they still, you know, CGA still needs to do if with our direction kind of a block by block analysis of how expansion would work. It seemed like everybody thought, you know, we're not gonna change charter amendment and, you know, we'll raise the height restriction, we're talking about just expanding those incentives and some of the things that work in the, in the overlay to other parts of the CBD, but we don't know what parts yet, so I'm, I think if we give CGA direction to explore that a little more, since there was consensus then we can make a decision without like kind of overstretching and like, we're not talking about like, we're, we wanna you know, create like high rises and and
Right.
Right?
I mean, there's, I think there's very little chance that that could happen anyway, because you, your blocks along westward are are very shallow also, just like that block on Canal Street that is multifamily, it's very shallow. Uh the only way that you might be able to accomplish some redevelopment of any significance and perhaps, you know, not even that much would be by assembling property. And 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 that's always a challenge for developers.
Right.
Uh they prefer not to have to do it if they can avoid it. And so um you know, uh that's where the discussion about how do you incentivize that
Right.
uh comes from. Okay.
But Sylvia had a, Sylvia, you had a slide that says general consensus expand. And I think that if if you think you need our direction in in order to explore that, bring it back to us for us to make a decision, then I I think that we should give that direction to them.
I mean, I I, this is not necessarily a proposal that I wanted to come with um you know, before you tonight, it's something that we discussed at the boards, this is what they thought. And I think it's a good idea to perhaps if if we keep the gateway then to look into it, and if we don't, then my suggestion would be that we look into how to incorporate some of the best parts of the gateway into your CBD so that you can get the same high quality or higher quality of development.
And that's, you're you're expanding the best qualities of the gateway, right? Either way, it's it's expansion, again.
In a way, yes.
Right.
So, okay, finally, I'm back.
So then does that mean that we have, uh we have, we're giving direction for for CGA to explore that?
Um, well, I think we're all in agreement, but I'd rather go through their presentation and then come back to you.
Um, that would be perfectly fine.
Yes.
I'm throwing the questions out.
Yes, and and we're discussing them and all and we can disconfirm it while we finish listening to the presentation. I I don't want to be ration, giving you direction before we finish listening to it. And and what's important about this process is, to me, is hearing all of our questions together, you know, not just my question, but hearing your questions and having those answered, so that's why I want to make sure we allow time for that.
Good idea.
Problem. Alright, so I'm I'm going to move uh on from that for the time being and go to our next section, which is the design standards, like I said, what we have tried to do here is to separate. Um Okay, there's, there's a little bit of a delay, I don't have anything that nobody could see here, so you know. Um in any case, um this section, as it exists today, mixes uh uh standards and principles of site planning and building design. And uh for example, you know, we even have interest speaking to existing buildings, but the rest of the ordinance is unclear as to what it applies. Uh is it, is it to redevelopment, is it to existing development, is it to improvements to existing development, so uh not just for this action, but generally, you know, one of the aims uh in in our, in our work was to add clarity uh to that, and so uh the first thing that we did was um rename it site and building uh design uh for clarity. We uh went uh through and tried to refine the wording of the purpose of these standards so that it is clear what we're trying to accomplish. Treating these standards not necessarily uh as immovable rules because we don't want to stifle creativity of design, but overarching principles that, you know, architects and planners and designers generally are used to like saying, okay, I see what they want to do and this is the way that I would interpret it, right? So it's not like, oh, you need to have ninety degrees of wall here and two windows there, so you know kind of getting away from that. And then uh perhaps most importantly is uh creating uh clear definitions of the terms new development, redevelopment and remodeling and using them consistently here and throughout the rest of the ordinance, so that we know what applies to each one of these conditions. So that's what we've tried to do here. So some examples, um we were hoping not to have to touch the list of we permitted uses, since you guys did a lot of work recently on it. Uh but we knew that there were some things that were left undone the last time, for one thing. And uh one of them was addressing the issue of um breweries. Uh what we have done in in this area is to not necessarily deal with breweries per se, but adding brew pubs, which falls under the general definition of restaurants, because they serve um uh Roger, you can remind me of this. Uh is Roger still on?
It's Heidi.
It's Heidi, okay. Okay, great.
Uh fifty percent. Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show, Councilman Vasquez has joined eating, he's been, okay.
Yeah. Um so um adding that uh as a permitted ground floor use, uh sort of expanding that um that range of dining and 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 entertainment uh venues. Uh and brew pubs uh do require a certain percentage of food being served in order to kind of fall under that definition, so that's the language that we have introduced, this is a question for all of you, I know that I believe that um Councilman Santin was a particular uh proponent of this, so uh you're gonna have to tell us uh you know, whether this is satisfied or not. Um we uh m- made more explicit, because the language is a little ambiguous. Um mixed use development is encouraged, but not required in this overlay and make that explicit. And you can tell me if you would prefer that it actually be uh required, but right now uh the um the language was not clear on that, and I think it was meant to just be encouraged and so that we try to be more explicit about that. The third um sort of significant change is to introduce what we are defining as employer provided accommodations. As a permitted use with a lot of different restrictions as to what that is. Um there is an existing property, uh which I'm sure you're very familiar with, uh which has um uh an existing uh substandard apartment complex, and when I talk about substandard, I mean, the apartments do not meet the current standards of this district of, not of this district of the multifamily uh uh minimum uh requirement. Oh no, did I go offline again?
No.
Okay, I don't know.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Uh so the code today, I can't remember exactly what those standards are, but I think that is uh multi uh, yes, please. Multifamily um um uh apartment buildings with a minimum uh square footage of like six hundred square feet or something like that, these apartments are very old. And as they existed, they were like three hundred and eighty or four hundred square feet, so as they exist, they could never be permitted to, you know, expand or upgrade. You know, there is a proposal for that building to convert it property owner uh into um a sort of a crash pad for their employees. It's an airline, so it would be the cruise that he would be housing there on a regular continuing basis. Uh it would not be a hotel, because it would just be that particular universe of patrons, if you will, and they will not be paying rent, they will not be paying for um any kind of lodging, because it would be more of a benefit provided to them rather than the owner putting them up in a hotel, the gentleman owns the property already, so he's been uh trying to uh figure out a way forward. Um this is before we um started working here, they have been granted a demolition, an internal demolition permit, so those apartments were basically gutted. And now they're trying to figure out what to do, because um under the underlying zoning of multifamily, they really can't convert them into anything else. Um and uh the property is small enough that the current uh well, I guess it's not current anymore, because again, the apartments have been gutted, but you know, the 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 original building was exceedingly over the density allocated to that uh property, so it was um uh a non-conforming density.
Yes, right.
And so th- there's a a lot of challenges essentially that that uh And so there's a lot of challenges essentially that that, uh, they have encountered. We are in a way trying to accommodate what would be a significant upgrade of that property without necessarily having it knocked down right now uh, and redeveloped. Uh, ideally, obviously, for any of the properties, uh, I think, uh, it would be preferable if they would redevelop in in consistent with the vision, but this is certainly one way in which, uh, this project could do it. Um, I I'm I'm disabled.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I I I'm sorry, I I got on late, but I missed the specific property that, uh,
I'm I'm trying to put it up on the screen, just give me just a second so I can find it.
Sure, and I want to see the location. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would. I think I think we know what it's it's the apartments that are that are right, uh, on the alley.
Behind the.
Yeah, behind the Starbucks.
And Mount Street.
Yeah, those, it strikes me, guys, I know that, um, I know that maybe you guys heard it, it had been rumored like it was going to be an Airbnb. I mean, I think that this is a narrow use here that would make sense, it seems to me, right? Because it it's it's employer provided accommodations, it's only going to be their employees of I mean, I've
Through the chair, yes. Are you, wait just one second, are you finished?
I I was I was just gonna say like my my only concern is you think in the future, this person then sells and then it's allowed.
Correct.
You know, then what what what's the downside? Could something else? I I know that when it had been it had been rumored, I had heard they were like, oh, they're gonna turn it into a place that's gonna be like an Airbnb. This wouldn't be an Airbnb, because nobody's paying rent. It's not like like people, the the these are employers, uh.
Well, if I if I if I may just kind of finish the thought, uh, before anyone else comments. Um, the way that we have written that little section, it would require the filing or some sort of restricted covenant that it could not be turned into a hotel, it could not be turned into an Airbnb. Um, so in the future, a new property owner will have to basically, um, what's what's the term Heidi? Or Roger, is it dissolve or vacate or whatever, the restricted covenant? Um, now, I I will tell you that there was, this is one where the boards, uh, they they had some concerns about, uh, some just didn't like it and some said, well, you know, I mean, I suppose that it could be acceptable if we did A, B, or C. Like, for example, uh, one said, if we if we add language that very specifically defines what an eligible employee is, and we put that in there, I could live with it. This was, you know, one of the comments. Um, there were, um, you know, some some additional, uh, comments from others in in that sort of same vein. If we did this or if we restrict that, if we, so, um, um, somebody said, well, you know, why why can't we just, uh, why can't we just, uh, allow hotels here? I mean, it would make sense because in the future, this could become a boutique hotel uh, or something like that. But, you know, um, there was no consensus, uh, necessarily as to let's just not do it or but there's certainly some concerns and I do understand them. Um, it's it's unusual, um, but it's not unique. I mean, you know, certainly are there are employees that, you know, that, you know, corporate housing, right? That's one use that exists and, uh, this would be sort of like that, because these would be furnished apartments, um, with just a kitchenette and a bathroom. Um, they are seeking to put two more. Um, they could not do it as apartments for rental, long-term rental. Um, and, uh, this, uh, with this definition, that would be something that they could do and they could add the amenities and, you know, it could exist for a foreseeable future. So that just leave it there.
Through the chair, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I I don't like to get, number one, I don't like to see very specific, um, verbiage like this on an ordinance for a a particular property. I think we've already done that before. I don't like to entertain, um, I don't think the city should be getting into personal, this is a business at the end of the day, whether they're paying to stay there or not. And I don't, I'm not gonna put it, I wouldn't like to use any of our resources to make sure that that is exactly what's going on. I mean, that's not, if they want to buy the property as an investor, you go and you look at a property, you see what what the uses are, wh- what's what what are the allowable uses? And if that property has potential, should you have to knock down inside, convert? Will that give you the amount of units that you want to to use for for whatever specific purpose or or business, um, plan that you have? So now, doing this in reverse and and trying to add verbiage to to compensate for the loss of the investment, it doesn't make sense to me for us to approach this for that matter. I think it should just be generalized multifamily.
Okay.
And they should convert to if they could only do two units in there, three units to go ahead and meet with their requirements. But if we 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 entertain this, I know that they're gonna be coming and going and they may not have to park, but parking will be an issue there for them as well. And that's what's coming to them, it's kind of like a way to 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 perhaps evade the requirement should it be having to to follow through with the other parking requirements. But I don't like the the N and L, I don't think that's part of the vision what we're trying to incorporate here when it comes to the CBD or their gateway.
If I if I may respond to a couple of, um, of the comments, um, I I completely understand. And again, you know, I I am aware, uh, I acknowledge the concerns. Um, I think the project is good. It doesn't mean necessarily we're we're, you know, trying to accommodate it. The language that we have is gen is gener, uh, general, right? We're not necessarily seeing this property can do this, which of course has a different kind of concern, because then, you know, other properties could do it as well, right? So that's one thing. But, uh, the other thing is that, um, sort of on the flip side, I kind of keep thinking that if you have a a dining, uh, uh, in retail oriented district, hotels can be a really good patron of restaurants and retail shops, right? Um, as much as one would like to think that residents are gonna patronize these restaurants and keep them alive, there's only so many times that somebody is going to go out to eat. Right, even the residents at One Curtis are going to maybe go out on a Friday to eat, you know, whereas, um, more transient population of hotels, tourists would need to go out to eat and frequent. I hear, uh, from some sources within the city that, you know, there are calls that are made. So, you know, from even from the hotels on Northwest Thirty-Six, how how far is the circle? You know, I would like to get there. Can I walk from here to the restaurant? And, uh, and so, you know, there there is an interest. Um, doesn't mean that we have to allow it. I mean, you know, again, hotels are actually a permitted use in the CBD. You don't have any, you know, I don't know if you would ever have any, but it is a permitted use. Um, and so, you know, I I just kind of think that a more transient population could really help support your restaurants that are going in there. Um, with that said, I completely acknowledge your concerns and I'm sure that others have them as well. And so, you know, I'm I'm seeking direction as to where to go, because I know that, um, this, um, property owner has been in the sort of limbo for almost two years. So.
Sir, we're not taking comments.
Yeah.
We had open public forum at the beginning.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Walt. Let me, I just, um, I I completely appreciate the the concerns that, you know, because you don't wanna you don't wanna legislate to a particular property. Um, I and I I get and may and maybe this is just a bias and I'm completely wrong. It is my bias, but I have no appetite for hotels in in the central business district. I'm 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 pretty over hotels, right? And and so I I get, I get that, you know, something could become a boutique hotel and that that would provide, you know, the kind of patrons that you want this restaurant, because you're not, you know, and and you may not get the kind of patrons, uh, that you want just from residents. Um, but I definitely don't want a hotel. In this particular case, I feel like the way it's proposed here, it's a very unique and narrow type of usage that I think can make sense in this area, because, you know, we we want to leverage our location in relation to the airport. Um, I ju- I just feel like if that could be, it's it's not a hotel, don't want that. It's not an Airbnb, I think it's a very unique usage. I don't think that there's a lot of possibility that then like a bunch of other people, I I think that because of our our location in relation to the airport, I think that this could be a usage that would do something with that property that would provide the patronage and isn't a hotel and isn't a vacation rental property. Um, I'm I'm kind of intrigued by the possibility of it, just my thoughts.
Something Councilman Santin.
Yeah, um, I agree with, uh, Councilman Faye. I think considering that that district were having concerns with, uh, you know, parking, right? And the non-transient, uh, resident that's gonna be there for a long period of time, gonna have a car. Uh, I think these type of use is a more possibility that they won't have a car and probably be Ubering around. I'm not saying that now we're gonna have a car, but it's a good chance. Uh, and then, of course, them visiting the restaurants and so forth, there's definitely a big chance of that. Now, in reference to like Councilman, while I was mentioning in reference, given a specific use for a particular property, is there a way that we can do like conditional use, like for later on, we don't have to worry, you know, it doesn't go well, then the next guy, you know, can't do this.
Precisely what I wanted to mention, I'm sorry for interrupting you, Councilman Santin, but you know, I I see, um, Councilman ahead, this is why I have the slides, because I forget things. Uh, but one of the comments that we got, which I thought was, um, uh, a pretty, uh, pretty good idea is instead of introducing a new use the way that we have done it, to, um, put it as a conditional use or a use exception that would come before you and you could set conditions on and, uh, and restrict it in 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 any way that it's necessary. And, uh, the other thing that they suggested was to, I I think I mentioned this, to make sure that we define precisely what an eligible employee is, which we have that language and that definition. So, um, uh, absolutely, that that could be an alternative approach if you are so inclined to consider.
I have one last question, reference to the actual building. I assume only because of how God pretty much gutted there at this point, they can't even go back to the grandfather use that they had there, right? Because they took more than they should, than fifty percent.
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Um, I will say, uh, I agree with with, uh, the Vice Mayor on this. We either allow it to be an Airbnb and whatever, but this idea of it's an employee or but it's not an Airbnb. It's either of an area where we allow transient visitors there. But there's, it's going to be impossible for us to, um, to verify that they're employees, certainly, we don't want to use our resources to verify that. We have a lot of other areas where things are not being used in accordance with this. And I can't imagine the nightmare of, you know, they say they're they're employees, but they're really paying rent or there was no one to fill, so I filled the room with. So it's either, and I understand what you're saying, Sylvia, with transient uses that perhaps in small amounts in that area, um, you know, would be beneficial to frequent our restaurants and, um, and retail shops, but I don't want to draw a line as to it's this and this, it's either we allow it or we don't. Um, there are small enough facilities that, what are we talking about? What could they have, a handful of of units?
Twenty, I think it's twenty-two.
Units? No, can't be that many.
That's thirteen though, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we just want to know how many would.
Yes.
So, I mean, let's not have fine lines here as to what is transient, because transient is transient.
Right.
You know, they're not permanent residents, they're here for a purpose, whether they're here to work or to visit their aunt and uncle, it doesn't matter, um, the and certainly, I don't want to be making these covenants and all these things that we can't enforce.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying I'm for it one way or the other, I want to hear more, but in in that case, let's not make things difficult for ourselves.
I think then we should listen to it as a conditional use and we could all discuss it at, uh, because the truth is, if you especially you're mentioning that they can't go back to the grandfathered use, let's not kid ourselves, that will stay like that for a long time.
Through the chair, to piggyback on both of you. Sylvia, this property here, um, you know how you have, uh, max coverage? Building lot, uh, max coverage on the lot? Are they using their max coverage?
Um, we we have not done, uh, an extensive review of that.
Because if they they haven't met their max coverage, they could always expand that building if they needed more occupancy. So that's another worry of mine.
I mean, right now, basically, they, the the idea behind this particular project would be to occupy the buildings that exist and sort of extend on the second floor, there's like one that is one story, one that is two stories and sort of sort of bridge between the two buildings to create a couple of, a few additional units. But, um, um, there's no expansion of the footprint of the building. Uh, what they would be doing is adding, you know, a little deck and the little swimming pool. I mean, it's more of a plunge pool, but you know, um, that's kind of what their concept is.
Okay, and and the other thing is, I know we've been reached out to, um, JC and I about other businesses and that want to provide employee housing for their employees. So, you know, this.
But in that same district, you're saying?
Uh, no, throughout the Springs, so, um, but anyway, let's go on, let's continue with the presentation and then we'll.
Can I make just one quick comment?
Surely.
Or actually, um, I'm gonna make a comment and then I I'd like to hear from Councilman Vasquez, because it seems that on this particular, just so that to be on the record, it seemed like two of us were intrigued by it and two of us, uh, not so much. So I'd like to know what Councilman Vasquez, but I I did want to just make one comment. In the same spirit of we can't use our resources to to verify that that kind of thing, when it when it comes to hotels in this district, I I think that that is something that we should take out of the CBD, because I don't have any confidence that, because that's the issue that we have, it's not, I don't want to say that I'm anti-hotel, even though I kind of already said it, but we have a lot of hotels and what what ends up being the problem, like we can't, you know, we have no control over a lot of the ways that it's run or how much they're they're, you know, uh, you know, charging for rooms and then everything that comes with that. If we have hotels and and just kind of as an aside, like I feel like we need to take that out of the CBD. Um, I I definitely don't think that we need any hotels in that area, I think that goes against what so just my and but and if you don't mind, Mayor, I don't know if you want to ask the Victor to chime in.
Well, let's just ask the Councilmen, since you're on, uh, virtual, if you have any comments.
Yes, sir.
By one way or the other, but do you have any comments?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, um, I appreciate that. Uh, first of all, let me just refer immediately to what Walter just said, that I'm inclined in that direction, I wouldn't want to see a hotel there. I I I like the con- concept of a boutique hotel. I I just, I I I would be opposed to that. Uh, I'm intrigued about the, uh, the, you know, using this for employees from an airline. But, um, I I I would, I would prefer we we look at all the other options and things we have before coming back and and saying, you know, let's 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 follow up on this. I do understand and I agree with, uh, Councilman Santin, that the owner is now, you know, two years in this process trying to figure out what to do and we should always be inclined to try to assist, uh, the best way possible. But, uh, I would, uh, I would, uh, you know, I I I agree that it's it could be complicated to try to convert it into, uh, you know, um, you know, housing or 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 any other form of of housing a- at this point.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
And and I want to make one comment, just because something may be misunderstood. Hotels in Miami Springs are valued businesses. We have a lot of them and we greatly value, um, they're, you know, them as businesses here. Um, so what we're talking about, Councilman Behad, I'm sure what you meant is you mean in that area, that you're not against hotels in general, you're just against a hotel in in the central business district. I just want to clarify that.
And through and through the chair, that I that's that's all, that's what I feel for. I've been a promoter and supporter of hotels, um, you know, as as part of our community. I just, that particular spot is of concern.
Thank you for clarifying, Mayor.
Do, do the chair. I'm sorry, Mary. Sylvia, this rendering here on the, if you scroll up, can we scroll up? And I ask because that's the next, I mean, based on how it looks now to what, what is proposed in the rendering, uh, notes this one.
Yes, I'm going back.
Just trying to get the.
If you zoom in that middle top picture, those are extensive additions.
No? No, it's, it, again, you know, what they would do is to add a second story on the one-story building and bridge across. So basically you, right now you have two separate buildings that are formed an L. One is two-story, the other one is one-story. So they would kind of continue the L concept, but bridging over the gap between the two buildings on the ground floor. So, uh, that's, that's the, uh, that's the concept.
But it increases foot traffic when you add.
It, it wouldn't, well, I mean, they are.
Occupancy, sorry.
They are, if I recall correctly, uh, they are consolidating some of the small units. And, uh, and, and, um, excuse me.
If you want to talk, please go outside so we can hear your voice.
They are, they are consolidating some of the smaller units. And so the number of units is, is increasing slightly, I believe, relative to what actually perhaps not even. I, I don't recall all the details, but
Okay.
Um, uh, they are, um, they are a, a little more in line with our code, not quite because you know, there's walls there and so on and so on. But, uh, yeah, the footprint is not being increased itself.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Let's go on to continue. I don't want to focus just on, on.
So our next section is related to architectural standards and, uh, one of the issues that we really were mulling over is, uh, you know, there are some, uh, uh, there's some language in there about the architectural style, uh, and it may actually be a little too narrow. Uh, and also isn't clear whether you can do modern interpretations of that style. I think that we have gone through a process where we realized that, you know, there are ways of doing that, whether, you know, this was done right or wrong, uh, you may disagree, but you know, uh, my, my, um, my approach here was to try and maintain the styles because I understand that, you know, this is something that was done for a purpose here. Uh, but be more explicit about, you know, what the elements, the overarching elements of the style are and how you could reinterpret them in modern architecture rather than necessarily try to mimic the old styles. So, um, you know, I, I think that the idea would be to try and discourage uh, any kind of artificial application of the style. So it looks sort of fake, you know? Um, the, the, um, the boards kind of said, well, you know, I, I think in this area, we could do away with having this type of architectural. We just, you know, we want a more modern contemporary architectural, uh, sort of district that's cohesive and is, uh, design, uh, elements. And so that's that's what their input was to us. Uh, we are in the current language, not necessarily saying do away with pueblo or mission revival style, but you know, sort of put it as a guiding framework rather than saying this is a style that you have to use, sort of being able to reinterpret it in, in modern, modern ways. Which, you know, some examples are on the screen, the way that can, that can be done. I don't know if you have any.
Well, let me ask you on that Sylvia. I do have a question on that.
Yeah.
How do you envision, um, who makes that decision as to, uh, and, and I'll go back to, this is years ago. When there was a business owner here, I, I won't name, uh, and before I was on the council, but I know that they were making remodeling and they incorporated what they felt was pueblo mission style. And I, sir, could I ask you if you need to talk outside because your voice carries? It's difficult. Thank you. So they envisioned, you know, pueblo mission style. And then we heard later, this isn't, you know, there was grumbling. It's not really so in those kind, and I, and I'm all for having the flexibility of something modern, a clean look, you know, something that is more in keeping. You know, we don't have to go back to, um, necessarily what has to be pueblo mission in, you know, the nineteen, in nineteen twenty-six. But that kind of decision, how is that decided?
Well, my, my.
At the architectural review board?
It, it, it could very well be that. That would be one goal. For example, when you have a side plan approval process that you have both your, uh, zoning and planning board and your architectural review board, but give them guidance, right? So it's not just opinion or, um, taste, right? And there's always going to be some individual interpretation of this. And so, um, the way that I try to do it here is to provide a list of the basic elements of these styles. For example, rounded corners or, uh, curved beam supports, uh, wide projecting eaves, regular parapets, um. So there's a, there's a long menu of those elements. And that gives us guidance so that we don't have to try and figure it out every single time. I mean, you know, the, the interpretation of how these are applied might differ, but at least we know these are the elements of this architectural style rather than, oh, let's go and look at a picture. You know, uh, which may be interpreted in different ways. I think that you're probably never going to be able to completely avoid, uh, opinions on taste of architecture. Uh, but you know, we should try and make it as clear as possible what the expectations are. You know, you don't have to incorporate all these elements if you want to keep that sort of framework of pueblo and revival, uh, uh, mission revival. Um, but these are the kinds of elements that you would have to choose from in order to incorporate into your, your design.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Couldn't, I mean, to me, it seems like, uh, we need to use our resources and isn't there, I mean, obviously you would want recommendations from them maybe to help you write up this section. Right? So, so will you give them a direction? Should we give them a direction? Have the board come up with?
You're saying with the architectural review board. Yes.
Correct.
Architectural, uh, let me see, um. The architectural review board um, supported the idea of, uh, modern interpretations of these architectural styles or even the elimination of the, uh, stylistic requirement. Like I said, you know, uh, there was some conversation about, well, you know, this district should be more contemporary, more modern architecture, uh, more, more stylized, uh, uh, there was not necessarily consensus, but you know, a lot of the comments that came, uh, with respect to this actually came from the members of the architectural review board. They did not say you didn't get it, you didn't get it right. Uh, in terms of the language that is here. Um, but you know, I, I guess they also didn't say it. You got it wrong. Um, uh, so I think that they did appreciate the idea of having sort of these principles that help us frame. So we know, for example, you cannot use vinyl plastic, um, fire glass awnings in buildings. We want awnings, but these are non-materials that are compatible with this. Uh, screening all equipment on the rooftop. So these are more like principles. And then you have the list of architectural, uh, style uh, elements, um, uh, that you can interpret in, in modern ways. So.
Well, I think in that meeting, we had two, you know, two boards and kind of people were throwing ideas out there and stuff, but I think we just got to give them, you know, to define it for you, what they think. And then, you know, we can obviously come up with, you know, uh, hard final decision on it. But I think as recommendation wise, I think we should direct them to come up with more defined standards and, you know, recommend requirements that you, they think that it's something that you should implement in this section.
Yes, sir.
So I, uh, the, at least the way I'm thinking about it, right? So there's, there's the narrow sense of like, you have to follow the, the pueblo mission style. And then it seems like, like members on the architectural re- review board were even favoring like eliminating, you know, that n- narrow requirement, uh, and just, you know, like have it just be more contemporary. And it kind of the way my reading of it, and correct me if I'm wrong Sylvia, is that, that, at least the recommendations from CGA would be to kind of like meet in the middle and just be explicit about specific elements, architectural elements, like from a menu that maybe allude to pueblo mission, but, but let, you know, let them kind of pick elements like rounded corners and kind of things like that, that, I mean, it, it seems like that's splitting the difference and I don't know. I, I feel like that, that's kind of the way to go.
So I, I would not necessarily say that my, um, my, um, my proposal here is a recommendation, uh, to keep the style or to eliminate the style. Um, I know that the current ordinance says that these are the stats. And so I tried to bring that forward in a more explicit, um, or, or clear way that at the same time was not so narrow, but provided some guiding principles. I think it's a policy decision whether you want to keep the style or not. Obviously the boards were not entirely, uh,
There wasn't consensus.
No.
But that seems like a compromise, right? Like rather than saying you must abide by this style and being very narrow and specific, or just let's have contemporary architecture and eliminate that. It feels like at least if we can pick out certain design elements that, that can again, allude to a particular style, but just let, allow the.
But we're talking about these design elements. If we're in the gateway district, as it's written now, is that they accrue points right for increasing the FAR, the density.
No, I believe these are just design standards, right? Or architectural.
So these aren't enhancement, I guess. What? Okay, okay. I, I thought that we were talking about these being enhancements and I'm going, then how do we decide? You know, how the points are given.
No, um, I think that, that it's, it's too risky to make them because there's a lot of, again, you know, of subjectivity that goes into it. So, um, I, I would not recommend making them into one of your incentive.
Okay.
Points. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I, uh, I, I appreciate, uh, what Walter is saying and, and Sylvia. Uh, I think that, uh, and I understand, uh, uh, Councilman, uh, uh, Santin's interest in providing more guidelines. But it seems like they could not, you know, really come together. But they do have, there, there are some general consensus points. Um, and I'm, you know, I, I always kind of lean a little bit towards, um, the pueblo style, but in a modern sense, like that slide that, uh, that, uh, uh, Sylvia had, that one, I, I, I like the clean lines of it, to be honest. Uh, and the smoothness of it. Um, but you know, that's, that's, you know, again, uh, a design issue for later on. But, uh, but I think that's a more modern way of looking at it. Um, a more contemporary way, uh, seems to me. I like it particularly, but you know, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
And I'm staying on mute because I got a terrible cough. Okay. All right.
Mayor, what do you think?
Well, and again, I, you know, after we hear your whole presentation, then, you know, we can discuss it some more and I'll ask again. I know at the beginning of the meeting, I asked for any public comments and after we hear, I'll give it, you know, anyone that wishes to speak briefly, the ability to comment, um. This is, I, I guess, unless you're gaining it for the enhancement points or I forget what we call them, whatever. I just don't see why we're telling someone. I'm not really understanding why we're telling someone you have to, we want these design. I mean, I, I see why we would want it. I see why we want it, but I don't see why. I see why we as a city would want it and it's desirable and it adds to our pueblo mission, to our historic, you know, we're heading for our centennial and it, and to all of us, I think it's very important that we keep that essence of, um, of the character of our city. However, I just, I'm, I'm kind of confused as to if you're, if that's not accruing towards something, then what is the incentive of, you know, why would we be telling them you're going to build something there? And by the way, we want you to add this.
Uh, well, I mean, that's a very common approach. You know, there are lots of cities that have, I mean, just like we have some site planning standards. These are architectural design standards. Um, and, and again, uh, the vast majority of them now, as I am proposing them are not necessarily, you have to do it in this style. But more like, these are the kinds of approaches that we want you to make sure that you hit when you design your building, right? So for example.
Sylvia, so excuse me, then I guess, and again, I'm just trying to, to understand all of this to, um, then I guess perhaps it's if you're building and we go back to with the, um, gateway as to, and there was some confusion. Um, you know, if you're totally demolishing and starting from ground up, then you have to incorporate these features. But if you're just remodeling and it's less than 50%, then you don't. And perhaps that's where this all comes in. If you're doing from the ground up, this is what we want to see going forward. And those are things that we need to clarify. But if you're just renovating or remodeling and it's less than 50%, then these don't have to be, and, and I'm not even sure with that, how we wouldn't have this mishmash, you know, patchwork of, you know, this building has this, but the one next to it doesn't. Um, again, I'm just trying to, I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just trying to visualize where we're getting with this.
Right. Uh, so yeah, I mean, we, we have a section later on and which has existed in some form, but not very clear that defines essentially, you know, what's the threshold for you to fall under these requirements, right? So if you're doing interior remodeling without a change of use, you're good. You don't have to do anything. If you're changing use, that triggers a certain level of review because, you know, we need to figure out if you need more parking, if you're, you know, if you need more. There's, there's different things that we would look at, you know? Um, if you are doing exterior renovations, then you do have to follow these principles to the extent that they apply to your, your structure, right? So, um, in that instance, for example, if you are renovating the exterior facade, then you may have to do certain things again, but they're not necessarily architectural style related. They're more designed aesthetics. As the, the design principles, right? So, um, again, screening your equipment on the roof, um, uh, making sure that your entries to the building are clear and, 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 uh, that, you know, they're very well defined. So people can see it that the windows are made with clear glass. These, these are principles. They don't have anything to do with the architectural style. So you would be required to follow that if you're doing your exterior renovations. Um, and if you're building from the ground up, obviously you do have to incorporate all of it. So that's the concept right now. Um, again, you know, for, for, for my purposes, I did not want to come to you saying, well, you know, I, I've taken that whole section out with the architectural style because I know that there was a purpose to it and it has to do with, uh, creating, um, sort of an identity for the district and as a gateway, you know, sort of announced, here we are in Miami Springs. That can be done in any other different number of ways, but you know, this is the way that it was chosen for the gateway. So I didn't eliminate it and it's a policy issue.
I, I just want to, I mean, this slide says, and then again, this is coming from CGA, current issue architectural standard may be too narrow and stifle design innovation. Uh, because at what we presently have is, is that it has to be pueblo mission and the, I guess the opposite end of that is just kind of open it up and just contemporary architecture to go. But it kind of strikes me that like, I don't know, somebody may come up with some kind of post-modernist kind of style that may not, may not kind of look, it may look out of place. Um, so a- again, I'm, I'm gonna kind of default to, and, and even though you didn't, you didn't want to call it a direct recommendation, but I, I liked the compromise idea of, of having some elements that, that, you know, that, that gives people the freedom to kind of interpret things, but you know, you have these design elements from some kind of, of menu. Um, and, uh, I, I think that that is the way to go because it, it strikes me that the current issue as, as outlined here is that it's kind of too narrow. And we don't want it to be, it's kind of like the Goldilocks, right? Like I feel like there's a common ground in the middle where like, hey, we want to see these elements. But go out and then you kind of guard against the other extreme, which is like, you have weird like building that just looks out of place, just the way I'm seeing it.
Through the chair. We're talking about the gateway or the CBD right now?
The gateway.
Okay. Cause the gateway does have verbiage under, on line one zero two, architectural design, exactly what you just said right now. It's stipulated there. So are we changing what's here already? Because um, it says here, and I like the change you made. You just, you scratched out the architectural design standard. In reference to, so I'll read it. It says incorporate either by replication, adaptation, or. In reference to, so I'll read it, it says incorporate either by replication, adaptation, or interpretation elements of pueblo slash mission revival architectures such as, but not limited to, and you provided a a list of items. You took out architectural design standard, which I think is a good thing, because it's not making them do
Yeah.
that as a standard, it's just what Councilman just said in res- in respects to elements. So I just wanted to make sure that it there, you just made a modification.
I modified it, yes.
And then it's
Yeah.
Right, and then to Maria's point, she's like, well, what is the point of this? And I'm seeing here, it's already, it's in here, Mayor, I guess, because I was confused too.
No, that was in the original gateway was that, but then we got to, well, where and, you know.
So the point.
The building is being built, but where is that essence of, you know, pueblo mission?
Right.
Style, um.
So I like the verbiage you entered into the ordinance, which was um, a little bit above that. It says uh, remodelings and renovations shall be planned, designed, construct- constructed and or improved cohesively, sustainably, and to be visibly appealing and compatible with their surroundings. I think that's what Mayor was trying to get at earlier, so it's stipulated there. Which is a a good thing, Mayor. Um, so basically, it's just so we don't have like random eyesores. I think is what Councilman also was trying to to say, I mean, it's just like having a two-story big house and then you have the tiny little like one stories.
Right.
So I I I like the verbiage that you suggested in your recommendation here.
I do too.
So um, something that I I hope I did, I'm pretty sure I thought about it in any case, in uh in the later section, um, where we're talking about what um, a a developer or an applicant will have to submit to us. Uh, there will have to be some kind of narrative, first of all, explaining what kinds of elements they have incorporated and how they are incorporated to, you know, sort of explain to us how they did this, how they accomplished this. And then for us to be able to look at it and say, yes, we agree that you you have done this in this manner. Um, so i- in 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 a way, um, you know, even though there's still a lot of um, uh, subjectivity into it, I think anything that has to do with style can never, you know, take the subjectivity out, but you know, sort of trying to give us a little bit more guidance, all of us, you know, ourselves when we're reviewing the projects, the applicants, where they're putting together their their designs and to to zoning and planning board and to you, when you look at the buildings to say, okay, here are the list of things that we would look for, and this is what they said they have done. Have they really, you know, done that? Um, so that was uh the goal uh there.
Okay.
If you would like, uh, go forward, I know that, you know. Alright, uh, so the next section has to do with uh different elements of side planning. And the goal here was to um try and emphasize, I believe this is a really important goal uh of this um gateway district. And it's a very challenging goal because of the configuration, because of the traffic, the volumes of traffic, the fact that it is a gateway, in fact. Uh, with only, you know, one in, one out, um, but emphasizing connectivity, pedestrian comfort and safety and trying to put in place some principles for uh developments to do that. Um, but again, you know, we we have some challenges to accomplish these things. Safe pedestrian movement to other parts of the gateway and other parts of the CBD in particular. Um, with the floor area ratio, uh, the maximum that is in place right now is one point seven. And that's what you can get to from a base of one. Uh, we are recommending going to two point zero to encourage redevelopment or building profile variations. Uh, the limitation there is with, again, you know, the building height and the building density. Uh, there's not much that we can do about that uh right now, and I'm not sure whether we would want to. But you know, this is, I think, as much as we can go uh, while staying within the constraints of density and building height. Um, and what going up to two does for us is it gives us a little bit more margin to look into breaking down the incentives and maybe introducing some additional incentives. Uh, so that's kind of where we are. Uh, we uh again have uh renamed the creative excellence standards. Um, what do we call them again?
Advanced design and development.
Design and development, yes, thank you.
Our bonus program.
Right, so um.
That's fancy.
But it is more accurate of what we're trying to do. Um, the current issue from my perspective with respect to the program is that provisions are not particularly encouraging of actual creativity or excellence because a lot of things that are in there are very basic things. It's like, there are things that, you know, working in any other community would be like, I would expect this to happen. I wouldn't, you know, have to give someone points to do it, right? So uh, our approach here was to try and reframe it as what it is, which is an FAR bonus program. And to uh to uh, you know, kind of focus on 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 the purpose, which is getting more uh high-quality design and development standards here. So um, we have, where we have been able uh expanded the categories and the program elements uh, trying to ensure that they accomplish goals that are consistent with the vision for this district. And removing some of the elements that we believe should be required instead. And you actually see some of those have been incorporated into the side planning uh standards. So now, you know, people are required to do these things rather than, oh, we'll give you points to do it. Um, we have clarified and calibrated the language uh for the allocation of the FAR consistent with different priorities, some specific items that we have um looked at. Uh, uh, have to do with the art in public places, the water features, the gateway features, which are sort of design, building design features, not necessarily having to do, but related to the issue architectural style, landscaping, site permeability and uh the um provisions for electric vehicles and bicycles. Uh, so some of the items for discussion that we put before the boards uh were, you know, should art be a greater percentage of construction value? That's something that, you know, we have been struggling with. Um, you know, in the one instance that I have participated here so far. Um, and um, the the boards were of the opinion uh, by general consensus that yes, you know, we should kind of expand on that. And uh, the other point of discussion, which I mentioned before, is the idea, should we try and have an incentive there for people to go and assemble property for larger sites? Uh, I'm not sure what that looks like. I haven't really come up with a good solution yet. The boards basically told us, yeah, we should look into an incentive for land assembly. But again, with our hands a little tied into what we can give, which is FAR essentially. Uh, I'm not sure how much more we can do. So we would have to think a little bit about whether, uh, you know, where where is viable and whether uh, or or how it would be done, if you give us direction to explore that.
Um, through through the chair.
Yes.
Sylvia, under that item of what we were talking about, the enhanced design program.
Yeah.
It says FAR in excess of one point O as referenced in subsection such and such. Um. Shall be able to incorporate a combination of elements of at least three in the categories. And then we have the categories with their calculations. So when it says in excess of one, where do we cap? With a combination of of three categories, but if those three categories, they add them up and they're at one point five plus the one, we're at two point five far, so are we?
No, it it, the cap is the cap, so if you go to the next page.
Okay.
You can see that it's two point zero. That's that's what we're recommending. That would be the cap.
Okay.
Can I, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, so here again, I think is uh uh, is is another place where CGA wants direction from us. Uh, and and specifically when it comes to uh exploring how within the constraints of what we can do, exploring how we can incentivize uh property assembly. It it seems like there was consensus from the board, Sylvia, uh, with that. So when we go to decide, I at at least from my point of view, I think that that if they need direction in order to continue to explore that, I think that that is worthwhile.
Creative excellence standard.
Um, and and specifically, because I think what you had said, right, is
It would be an additional
Right.
Element of the program.
Right.
Create an incentive for
Or property assembly. Yeah, so I think that that that's something that is worthwhile and if the the boards also were in consensus of that, I think that just my recommendation would be that we give direction for that when we go to decide what direction we should give.
Certainly could be an allocation of FAR and it could be substantial. Rather than having to go and do a little bit here, a little bit there, you know, you could like possibly concentrate a lot of your FAR.
Right.
I I don't know.
And you would explore that and come to us with more, you know, more detailed recommendations.
Yes. So for instance, uh, there's one example that you have in your in in your program here, I believe. And that is with the green buildings, if you get green building certification, that gives you point five FAR. So, you know, something along those lines, perhaps.
Um, Sylvia, with the art in public places, and I understand art in public places when it is um government entity, how that works. Um, but with art in public places, when the private owner, how do we um How do we I don't know what word I want to say, how do we control it? Well, there's several issues. One of them is if we say, you know, percentage, like in 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 government, it's, you know, I think it's one percent of the project, and there's a whole committee for that and it's approved and, you know, and the um artist is vetted. How do we prevent someone saying this is worth seven million dollars? Um, it happens to be my cousin's nephew, who's the artist, and he says he put a price on it of seven million dollars and that's you know, what I'm putting on there because we, there isn't that, and I'm all for art. But how those kinds of things come down to, I'm not sure exactly, or it's something that we find is not really tasteful, you know, but it's not obscene, but it's not really tasteful, but it's going to be art and 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 I'm saying that because we had this issue in the past with the murals and, you know, and deciding uh, you know, the reality was that, you know, with the murals, if we allow them, then really it can be any mural. Um, and anyone can put something as long as it's not obscene, it can be something that is not particularly um desirable for that area. And and you don't have to answer me now, I'm just kind of, if you could maul on that. Um. The gateway features, what can you expand upon?
I mean, that's
By that.
Sort of there, um, it was framed as community entry. And I'm I'm reframing it as a gateway feature and it's more of a a an element. For example, uh, I think that uh the one building that you have approved in this district through these standards um, has done a a a good job in terms of defining the that sort of entry, that set of sense of entry by having those curved walls. But it could have been enhanced even more by having, for example, a little tower on those corners that says, I'm arriving, you know, here's something special, right, that tells you you're you're entering the district. Uh, so that's kind of what uh this uh language now wants to do. These are focal points that would be uh located on the edges or the corners of of the district, whichever the boundaries end up being, right? Um, and um, sort of defining a little more what what that would be, um a special landmark feature such as a public space, which would be no less than two hundred square feet of usable space, not including the adjacent public right away, located at a pub building entry or a location. Uh, or it could be, you know, gateway signage or special paving or public art. Uh, so these are the kinds of things that, you know, we're trying to define a little better so that it is understood what that actually means, um, and what what is supposed to signify, right?
So I guess my thought on that is if we expand, you know, just trying to connect the dots down the road, if we expand the gateway district, you know, these gateway features may not be necessarily the same that we want at the gateway by the river than we we want further in on Westwood Drive or, you know, so all of that has to be kind of thought out as to um, the features may uh, have a lot more um flexibility.
Right, so, you know, I was, i- in in all of this rewriting, I was trying not to tie our hands or the hands of the designers too much uh, by making it so specific that there's only one way to do it, right? So again, sort of providing these principles to guide the designer. But then, when you come through the uh the the development review process, you have the ability to say, well, you know, this is not precisely what we're hoping for here. Uh, can you make modifications to accomplish this? You know, if they come in and they say, well, it's two hundred square feet of public space, but it's sort of nukes and crannies and doesn't really you know, give you the kind of sense of public space, um, you could, you could just reject that. Um, and uh, and so um, that's again, you know, not to repeat myself too much, but the approach that I've taken with almost everything here.
And by the way, we're very appreciative, you've done a very, very thorough job. Um, and you've also tried to simplify it as much as possible, so we can all
Yeah.
Um.
Me, because
But it's very thorough job.
People about it, it's it's so hard right now to explain what it actually says.
Okay, so let's go on.
Okay. Uh, parking requirements, we had this discussion with the boards before the parking study came out, before you had a chance to review and I had a chance to listen. So we don't have, you know, any particular changes to the standards, the parking standards per se here. But the section on it, I felt it was disorganized and it lacked clarity, especially distinguishing between the requirement that applies to new development versus existing development. And again, um, I think that where we kind of in in my approach at least, you know, where where I'm drawing the line is, if you are, even if you're an existing building, you know, but you're changing the use, we need to look at your parking requirement, right? So if you're going from an office to a restaurant, that triggers the ability. So if you're, if you have a restaurant and you're going to a restaurant, even that, depending on the kind of restaurant, might trigger it. Uh, by the way, one of the things that I forgot, but one of uh the board members um spoke about in terms of the restaurants is whether we should be very explicit that driveways, um, drive-throughs may not be an appropriate use um, or or type of restaurant or or um accessory to a restaurant. So that's something that, you know, just throw out there for you. Um, so reorganize that whole section to try and improve the flow.
Yeah.
Uh, specify that changes in use must be evaluated. Uh, specify criteria for the consideration of a parking variance, which is something that is uh mentioned there, but no criteria for how to prove it. And specifying how parking for mixed-use buildings is to be calculated. Those are the things that we have tried to accomplish.
Can you clarify those last two?
Uh, the last two. So there is language in there, let me go to that section so I can look at it specifically. Um. There's language in there that says, you know, if you have a requirement uh for a certain amount of parking, you have the ability to request a variance from that, to have less uh, or, you know, provide it in a different way. Uh, but um, there was nothing here that gave me as the planner that would review that or the zoning and planning board or you the list of criteria by which to judge the merits of the variance. So now we have introduced criteria to do so. Um, and um, the other thing that we have done is to try and um and define, you know, a methodology, if you will, not fully. But, you know, a little bit more clarity as to how uh uh a mixed-use a mixed-use project can provide shared parking, right? So for instance, let's just take and and again, this was before your parking study came out. So you know, these these actually might change. But the idea was, for example, a mixed-use project, you have one Curtis bike where it has it has housing and it has retail and it has office use. Those three uses often have different schedules of parking use, right? So, you know, residents may leave during the day, leave parking spaces empty for most of the day. The restaurants may have a peak hour at lunchtime. And then again, in the evening, the retail stores are going to be, you know, sort of steady throughout the day. But then after a certain hour, they they don't. So the idea is that there is might be a reduction factor that you apply and there are methodologies for doing that that are well established. We don't have to reinvent the wheel for taking those differences into consideration and potentially reduce the onsite parking need. This may not be something that you want to do based on the findings of of the parking study. But I also did not hear necessarily anything that would preclude doing this because I heard that there is generally speaking, you know, parking is just in not necessarily in the locations that people want it or easy to find out. So so that's just something that you may want to think about as well.
Mayor, I could not be in more support of of those three things. I I think I've mentioned the three final things, two, three and four. I I think I've mentioned that one of the takeaways from from our parking workshop is that we need to be clear about going forward, that we that we have to be very mindful of of new development, redevelopment. Totally in favor of of having like changes of use trigger a parking evaluation. Thinking about a particular property that went from being one thing to being six things. I I think specifying a criteria for for how you consider variance makes total sense. And also I think that specifying, you know, particularly how, you know, parking should work when you do have mixed use. Particularly since we kind of like made adjustments to the use, I feel I feel like those things are I'm a thousand percent in support of of those things. I think that'll help us going forward. I think that's very proactive. And I mean, I do, you don't, I don't, that doesn't sound like something that you need direction on. That sounds like recommendations that you're making.
Yeah.
I am 100% in favor of those recommendations.
To the chair, and we also established a parking fees as well. So this may work.
I mean, we've we've already established the parking fee, right? We have.
We have.
You have, yes. And and there's something else that I believe, I'm kind of trying to remember exactly what language was put in here.
Yeah. I have it here for you.
Uh, no, but you know. Yes, the the parking fund is from 226, line 26 to 231. So I've added that in there too.
That's sort of pre, do you want me to read that for the council? I see everybody.
I mean, to be to be clear, the 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 parking fee is in the event that the city credits parking to development.
Yes, but it returned it would be a payment in lieu of shared parking, so they would have to pay the city for that.
Instead of a variance, because variance take delays projects. In lieu of that, they could just go straight to the parking fee.
Yeah, we don't benefit from the variance.
It just takes a while.
Yeah. All right. So from the boards, you know, there was quite a bit of conversation about that. We made sure that they remembered there was the sparking study ongoing and that very soon there would be outcomes from that. So, you know, without knowing exactly what those would be, essentially, they said, yeah, you know, we do have concerns about district-wide issues related to parking and, you know, if the parking consultant is coming up with, you know, direction with regards to the fee in lieu of shared parking methodologies, way finding another, which we know they did, please counsel, implement those recommendations. I'm not going to get too much into this, but you know, essentially, we did make some significant changes to the project review process. So now I mentioned that we defined the terms, new development, redevelopment, remodeling. We have used those definitions to specify, clarify the applicability of of the of the of the standards and 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 the requirements. And we have gone ahead and added more detail to the steps of the process so that the applicants and and ourselves fully understand, you know, this is the order of things. And also added a little more clarity to the responsibilities, who is doing what. It wasn't always particularly clear. And so we have done that. We also have introduced a period of expiration and requirement for a development agreement to be part of the process. So this is a new tool that we are introducing. Heidi still on, I'm sure that she can talk a little bit about the benefits of that. But I know you have had that discussion previously, so.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
A question in reference to the the agreements. Like in reference to our one Curtis, where the public right of way was used part of this project. And is that the place to put like, say, look, reference to a permit, my whole thing, I think it needs to have. In other words, if you're going to have our right of way for use to do this project, it has to have two separate permits. One for the right of way and one for the project. That way, like what happened now, it got tied to the same permit. And the delays were constant. Where if we had two separate permits, that would never happen. Can we implement that?
It certainly helped, you know, I mean, I think that we're we're going to try and be very meticulous about how we review the project. Regardless of the development agreement, how we go through that review. So that when we get to the point where we're making a recommendation to the zoning and planning board and to you, that we have all the conditions spelled out. And and those go into the resolution. And a development agreement would incorporate those conditions and have additional terms. And again, you know, I I'm not the expert on development agreements. I'm so part of it in other communities, but you know, Yseroda is very familiar with them. We work with them a lot on putting together these development agreements. And they're very experienced and looking out for the interests of their communities. So whatever the conditions need to be, you know, they're spelled out. I don't know if Heidi or who's, I don't even know who's on. It's Roger? Okay. I think it's Heidi. Heidi, did you want to add anything about that, the redevelopment? The development agreement?
I'm not sure that Heidi's on.
Oh, Roger. Heidi, yeah, she had an emergency with her youngest child this evening, so.
All right, we can go on then.
Right, so.
But that's a good point of deciding, you know.
Council members, I am here. As it relates to development agreements, I mean, the conditions that are imposed are really on a on a case-by-case basis and a development by development. We call it analysis, obviously. So it's kind of difficult to predict exactly what type of conditions would be necessary. Without something in front of us.
Yeah, I certainly you on a case-by-case basis, based on the review of the project, the conditions of the project. But that's the whole point. The development agreement is tailored to the project, right?
But we could also just put that plain, simple, if you're going to do the right of way, that's a separate permit.
You can, you can do that, yeah. So site plan review, we have also sort of gone back and looked at that list and spelled out a lot of things that were not in the form of the code today. So that's going to make it a little bit easier for a prospective applicant to know exactly what is expected of them, for us to know what we expect of them, for you to look at the project or the zoning and planning board to look at the project. And so that's pretty much that. I'm sorry. Never mind. There is a short fee section that was in there already. And we have introduced the concept of cost recovery there. It's something that we're going to be taking care of with Yseroda pretty soon. Actually, we may not even be necessary to do it here because we, you know, there are different references to, it's not even called cost recovery. I don't even remember what it is. But it's in different sections of the code and it's sort of unclear and when when is it paid? And so we're we're going to try and add clarity to that, that there's a cost recovery. When is it paid? Even how much it's going to be, it's not going to be in the code, but you know, it's it's going to refer back to the your your fee schedule. And it's going to be a lot more specific. And it's also trying to define how the accounts are maintained. And then the last, I think it's the last section, is the entire section, which is new on development agreements. It's very specific about, you know, the basic terms that would be included. But it also has under number 15 and number 18, any other information, conditions, terms, restrictions, or requirements determined by the city attorney, city manager, city council to be reasonably necessary for the public health, safety or welfare of city residents. And so, you know, that kind of gives you a little bit more leeway. What else? Yeah, the 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 boards, they wanted to make sure that in these two sections, we have clarity regarding the threshold for improvements, for improvement requirements, sort of like the 50% rule. And
What is the ambiguity there that they say requires clarity?
There there was, there was a lot of ambiguity because I think that, you know, first of all, there was some language in there that said, well, you know, if it is this, then, you know, the city planner or the city administrator can make the decision. But it really didn't say, okay, up to what, up to what level is that authority, right? I I don't think that anything but a an interior remodeling or perhaps a simple facade improvement should be not necessarily being reviewed by the zoning and planning board, you know. And anything which is of a certain, and and the 50% rule is is a good one, you know, we can do that. That would trigger you having to be reviewed under the higher standard.
Sylvia, I got confused with what you said. You said the 50% ru- rule, but then I thought you said that anything other than a very minor should be reviewed by the
Well, I mean, by minor, I mean, anything that would be less than the 50%.
You're saying 50% is my.
And and that it would fall either let's say, under the category of being an interior remodeling without a change of use or a or a facade renovation that doesn't change the uses, it doesn't change anything substantive. So about the project.
What you're doing here is clarifying that because my understanding it was we were interpreting it as 50%. But there was under 50%, but you know, you don't have to comply with this, but over 50%. But we were interpreting like that, but it really wasn't clear.
It was, there was nothing in there that said that. I mean, you know, I think it was sort of like, kind of trying to set the standard because we didn't have one. But now it's spelled out. I think it's always better if it is spelled out. Take that ambiguity out. It's ma- it makes everyone's lives easier from the perspective of applicants, staff, the boards and yourselves, so. And, you know, takes away a lot of risk for the city coming from interpretations. And that's it, Lily.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I, when when we got, when we approached CGA, I think that this is exactly what we had envisioned. I I am so thankful that we have you guys looking at this, making recommendations that we're investing in having you guys review these things from your vantage point, based on the experience that you guys have. I could not be happier with the fact that we have CGA here, getting this in front of us. Just I just overall, thank you Sylvia. And and thank you guys for the work that that you're doing. I think it's a, it's a great improvement and a step in the right direction for our city to to be able to lean on them and leverage their experience to fix and clean up all these things that in in a lot of ways are causing problems and limiting us.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I think we all feel likewise, very appreciative and and a lot of work has gone into this. And it's, they're complex issues. I mean, our community is small and in a way that makes it more complex because it's not a broad area that we're talking about. And there's so much difference between one block and the other. Okay, so let's do this. Let me, JC and Tammy, is there anything you want to? I know you've been very quiet and and absorbing all this. Is there anything, any guidance, any comments you want to?
You know, you hit the nail on the head. Every block is different in this this community. And the CBD and the gateway are are no different. Earlier, when we were talking about the that project that could have been, that that is for the employees of the airline. If you look at those properties now, those are, those are tough properties to to even, the space is limited. The the limitations are are great in those properties. I think there's a lot of room for improvement in in our, in our ordinance here in our zoning. And I I, you know, we have one of the best here, so. I'm happy with what they're, with what they're doing. I like the direction in which we're going. And I just want to continue pushing forward to make sure that we get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Tammy, I know you have a lot of of background and experience with the city, going through all these different phases. Anything you want to add for us to consider?
Mayor, I can't hear Tammy.
Council, oh, he couldn't hear you, Tammy.
I just said that I think it's very important that Sylvia takes a a look, a deep dive into looking at every single property and how all of this will affect every single property.
Roger, is there anything that you want us to consider?
I really, I don't have too too much more because you are in the best of hands with Sylvia. What I will say is, I'm very very excited about the development agreement inclusion in in New York, so I'm looking for in particular, because I know that painting with a broad brush like you, you were kind of hinting at earlier, a mayor in a small city. That's not necessarily perfect where every block is different. So I think that development agreement inclusion in there is really going to help address site-specific condition.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Roger. And now, before we discuss it any further, I'd like to open it up again. We did it at the beginning. If there's anyone in the audience here or virtually that wants to make any comments, please keep it under three minutes. But do we have a sign-in sheet for them? Okay, is there anyone that wants to say anything? Okay, hold on one second. Let me let you sign in. Is there anyone else that wishes? Okay, come here and and sign in while he's talking. And please keep your comments to under three minutes. We're all ears.
I think your mic is off. Just press the gray button in the back. Put your, put your hand on the mic and the stem. Up, 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 there, there, you're on, go.
Hello. Good evening, Orlando Lamas. I'd like to say, did a great job taking the points from
Hello. Good evening, Orlando Lamas. I'd like to say, did a great job taking the points from the joint meeting. The only point I'd like to really touch on would be the design standards that we have for the gateway. I think the, if we are going to enforce it, I think it should be expanded to the business district as well. Because at the moment, Gateway District is so limited, it would take fifty years for that to be redeveloped with those design standards and really register to people. So I think it would just become a design burden for the developer. Whereas if we expand it to the greater business district, it'll be easier to register and understand what we're trying to do in a shorter time. Otherwise, I, I think it'd just become something to inhibit development. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, and who do we have next, Erica?
Cacarina? Oh, Cesarina. Okay, come on up. Just keep your comments tender three minutes. Yes, I understand. Okay, thank you. So I, I only want to add some, what our ideas are. This, the, the place, we bought a place and the company bought a place because we're, we were spending a lot of money in the hotels for the crew and, and for the crew. So we are very open to your suggestion about what to do. We don't, we don't want to, to, to be like, okay, we want to do this. Right now, we bought the, that property.
Are you referring to Thirty Canal Street?
Yes.
Thank you for clarity for everything.
So we are really open to your suggestion, but, but we have to do something. So either this or either that. We don't want to impose anything. And so we are really open, as I talked to Sylvia the, the last time that I went. And of course, we, it is for the crew, but if we, if I can do something else, but I have to do something. Because I am spending money every, every month and also I have two houses rented for the crew. And I am spending over here and over there. So really, I would really appreciate your decision about us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up?
Carol Gordon. My name is Carol Gordon and I just want to say thanks for all that you are doing. Miami Springs is unique. It's a great place to live in and I want to see it stay that way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay, so let's go back to our discussion. Councilman Behet, you had made several requests for consensus for us to give direction. Why don't we start with that? And if we can agree with that, that way we're giving Sylvia the direction.
Mayor, if you like, I kind of kept the scorecard, right? I wrote down three things that were not recommendations, that, that Sylvia said she wanted direction from us in order to continue to explore and bring back to us for ultimately a decision. One of them was direction to explore, and this is out of order just because I wrote it on top. But direction for us to explore incentives for property assembly, that was one that had consensus from the boards. The other one was direction for expansion of the district, not clear, you know, they would still do like a block-by-block analysis, but give them direction to explore how we would expand the district.
Back to us with suggestions.
Correct. And the other one was direction on architectural design, going from the narrow, it has to be pueblo mission. And there, there was a, you know, and again, it seemed like some people on the architectural review board were in favor of just like, you know, open it up and let it be contemporary architecture. And I guess the, the suggestion or the recommendation from CGA was what was written in the ordinance, which. So that, those are the three that I had that we needed direction. We had to give them direction.
Okay, so let me do this. And we're a workshop, so we're not really taking a vote, but is there anyone that is in disagreement of giving the direction that Sylvia is asking for? These are pretty basic. Councilman Vasquez?
No disagreement.
Okay, all right. So we'll go ahead and, and ask you to go forward with that direction with those three things. Now, anything else?
Yeah, there was one more that, at least from, you know, again, kind of taking score, was in reference to the Thirty Canal Street. Whether or not, and, and I would, so here I'm going to editorialize a little bit. Because we just heard from the owner of the property who's saying like, you know, well, we kind of are trying to decide what to do. It is currently zoned for a hotel in that district, so they could put a hotel, correct?
No.
No, they can't. They cannot? Okay, so then.
It's not because of the overlay, it's the, the underlying zoning also, which is multifamily.
Oh, because that, that's right, because that's a section of multifamily. Okay, so then strike that. So then. It, so it seemed like that was a viable proposal that was being set forth by CGA to have this kind of like unique usage and I.
I think with that, we would have to have a vote. This is a more complicated, this is about a specific property. So this, this is a workshop. We're not going to take a vote. I think we've all made our comments on that, but I don't feel comfortable.
If I may, I think we could take a recommendation from the zoning and planning board and architectural review board to look at a use exception or a conditional use. Instead of trying to introduce this as a language for a, a new permitted use. It might be possible to do it. That way we can explore that.
So let's do that. If you can revisit it, see what is possible, work with the owners and, you know, re, and then.
Probably not the solution that the owner wants because again, they've been waiting for a long time and a use exception or conditional use process would, would take a little bit longer than that. But, you know, I, I do acknowledge the concern about establishing as a permitted use where perhaps, you know, it could happen in other properties under different conditions. Again, you know, we're trying to make it very narrow in the language, but you know.
I don't like to put something on there that, you know, there's, it's just, oh, we're calling it this, we're not calling it this. And then, you know, somebody is saying, well, you know, I'm this, this, you know, call me this and, and I. We're, we're talking, I mean, we're nitpicking and let's just be fair and, you know, say, look, this is allowed here, it's not allowed. This is what's acceptable, this isn't. We're talking about transient lodging because it benefits the area, then it's transient lodging. So I'd like to, to see that, something that is reasonable, not, you know, just. Especially for, you know, one property that we're making it this, but in the property down the road, no, you can't have that. If we're looking at, at the gateway district, we need to, you know, really consider what we're going to allow there. I think we're all pretty much in agreement that, you know, hotels in that area are probably not well suit, you know. Not what we'd like to see. We've got hotels in Miami Springs and again, they're very valued business owners and businesses. Very critical components of, of our Miami Springs community. We're just talking about in a certain area, whether they would be.
Can we make that? So I don't, that wasn't something that was recommended, but I think, I think you're alluding to the fact that we may have consensus on that. Should we give direction to CGA or, or should we give direction that we move towards taking that out in that particular district, taking out hotel as a acceptable usage?
Hotels are not a permitted use in the gateway.
But in the CBD.
In the CBD, okay, but right now, that's not.
Right, because if you're expanding, okay.
I think with what Sylvia said, I mean, we haven't had that issue come up because the land is so landlocked that.
What about the issue about the, that small section that is zoned for multifamily and that for whatever reason is not defaulted to CB, CBD within the gateway? Is that something that we need to, will that be fixed by the conversation about the expansion? Or is that something that we need to give you a particular direction about?
It would have to be separate because it would require an amendment to the zoning map and potentially, maybe even I recall correctly, potentially a, a future land use map. So it would be a little more complicated than just amending the code the way that we are right now in terms of just the language.
Should we give direction? I'm still kind of unclear about why it seems, we asked, right? And, and Sylvia said that it seemed like it was an oversight. I'm not clear about what the consequences of, of changing that. Can we give direction for, for CGA to give us more clarity about like, here's what, you know. Do we need to fix it? Can we give direction of that?
Does anyone have any reason they don't want to go there, anything they want to discuss or anything? And again, these are very general direction.
Through the chair.
The workshop is to, you know, to move forward. So we're just giving you direction.
That's true. My question is, what limits, what gives a city the right to say no to another applicant that's would like to request a non-conforming use for their property to do exactly what Thirty Canal Street is doing? Because there's other multifamilies on the strip, so they wanted to convert that and use it as a transient housing. What, what, how can we say no to certain and, and?
Well. It, it depends on how you're defining transient housing, right? But again, if we're talking about this particular model definition, this model, it would have to just be compliant with the restrictions that, that we are sort of recommending here. Right? Which would be, again, you know, I, 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 I do agree with the boards that we probably need to finesse the language or, or define better what eligible employee is. This is something that is in there, you know. It's a benefit to eligible employees in addition to regular wages lasting no more than, I don't have the number yet, but you know, a, a certain number of days and no more than a certain number of days. Employer provide accommodations cannot contain or shall not contain more than one room, which may provide a private bathroom and kitchenette with a habitable area of no less than three hundred and no more than. I'm not sure yet, you know, what the square footage is, a floor area. And that a declaration of restricted covenant shall be provided as a condition of approval for any employer provide accommodations restricting the use to temporary lodging for company employees who are not required to pay for temporary lodging and prohibiting the use of the accommodations as a permanent dwelling, boarding house, vacation rental, short-term rental unit motel or hotel use.
So my question is, what if the owner is next to that building that holds multifamilies, you say, well, that's a really good idea. I want to do that too.
They, if they need the conditions.
So the whole strip could be.
Well, and, and you know, the whole issue of workforce housing right now is a big issue, you know. So I don't see how we would not create a whole city where, particularly because we're by the airport and we're in a central area.
As workforce housing in the sense that it's not permanent.
What I meant is that that is something that is being, you know, that is a big concern right now and is.
Comprehension plan that we just.
So again, I, I don't know, verify that. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering, and, and I did not live in the city then. But I, I've heard from many people and neighbors who were, you know, flight attendants and so forth. Of the considerable amount of folks that resided temporarily in the city, either in houses or in apartments. How was that handled? And I'm not, this is not a question to be answered right now. Just maybe something that would have, maybe provide some guideline for us in this discussion. And I'm, I'm certain that this is, you know, at least three or four decades away old. But I'm just wondering if we had something like this before. How, how did the city manage it? Just curious. And again, not for discussion, not for conversation now, but maybe some information that we can get might help the conversation.
Mayor, can, can I just make the suggestion? It, it seems like the board had a, a bunch of ideas related to conditional use for this unique situation. And, and it seems, it's, it seems like we're kind of, you guys have very, very valid concerns. But it seems that some of us are kind of want to know more. I, is it okay to just give direction for, for that to be kind of more fleshed out for us to just decide yes or no? Or because if we don't give direction, then it, it kind of, I think we're, we're deciding right now by not giving direction to, to explore it just a little bit further.
Explore it further and bring us what?
Because, so like the things that I wasn't, Councilman Centine was at the, the meeting of the boards. I was not. Sylvia just read a, a lot of the recommendations that came up by the board. And, and we have somebody who purchases property who has had it. It was recommended by the boards. We'd like to leverage the fact that we had the experience of the people on the boards. It was recommended that we consider conditional use. If, if we don't. It just strikes me that this is going to die now.
Well, I, I tell you what, I'd rather have that because this is a specific property and this workshop is to consider the gateway. And I don't think it's appropriate to be making decisions on one property for this workshop. So I have no problem bringing this back at a meeting where we're discussing, you know, this specific property and the uses with that. But, you know, this is the gateway workshop as a whole and to start pinning it down to this. And, you know, then why aren't we discussing some other properties that have certain situations? So. Yes, sir.
We have to give you kind of direction to put it as a conditional use in the, in the.
Roger.
In the recommendations you're giving us.
Well, let's, let's ask Roger, how do you suggest?
Look.
This be, discuss this particular property.
Can I jump in before Roger?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead Sylvia.
I, I was just going to say, the, the language that is in there is not specific to the property. So you can give me the direction about the language that is not going to have necessary, I mean, it's going to have an impact eventually, right? Ultimately, but you know, the language that is there is not specific to this property. And if you tell me that this type of use should be made into a conditional use, we can do that. You know, we can create, you know, you have a list of permitted uses and you have, I think there's something, maybe not even. You know, you don't even have a list of prohibited uses here because the CBD provides for that. And so we can, we can just create a new little section here that says this type of use would be a conditional use that would require review by CPB and council and these would be the restrictions on it. Kind of the same thing, but do it as a conditional use rather than as a permitted use, right? So you will have a chance to review it and, and, and put any other conditions on it aside from those restrictions that we already have defined.
I mean, I'd rather see it that way because I think that the alternative for them is to have this eyesore there for a long time. So to me, I think we need to at least discuss it. Seems to me like a good alternative plan. But I love the idea of the conditional use. I think it's something we definitely should explore. So in my opinion, I would put weight on putting that at least as a language, as a recommendation.
Do the chair. So if this is not approved, right? There's no plan to do anything else? It's just going to stay like that and it's?
No, I, we understand. We're asking that, just.
What is the alternative?
Because if the concern is that it's just an eyesore, there has to be other options for it not to become because you're just not going to let it go.
Well, I mean, certainly the property owners, because their plan has been from the beginning, whether it wise or not, because they bought the property without necessarily knowing. Because their plan has been to provide their employees with a place to crash and not to have to spend multiple, you know, on, on hotel rooms for them. I think it's possible that they would sell the property, but as far as the alternatives. Certainly somebody could try to redevelop it. For one of the, maybe even the property owners for, for, for the uses that, the other uses that are permitted or that are proposed, right? So somebody could do a, I don't know, I mean, I haven't done the analysis. The property is really small and that's kind of the problem with the properties along that Canal Street block. They're all very small. You know, and so what you're going to get is sort of the same pattern of little, you know, kind of, unless somebody comes and buys all of the properties and decides to do a larger, and, and even then, it's, it's not, well, you know.
And I guess that's my point. It's like, so in this one, it's going to be only for employees, but this other one is, I just don't see. You know, it's either we allow transient, you know, Airbnbs or small apartments or we go back to, you know, where a lot of the units in Miami Springs were, you know, a little studio with a bath that, you know, it was for pilots or, or airline employees. But I, I just, I just, just. This one property and then, you know, we have the same thing all along Canal Street, as you said, of all these other properties that don't really. This one property and then, you know, we have the same thing all along Canal Street, as you said, of all these other properties that don't really fit any mold. Um, and we're talking about the Gateway District and and I feel like this, we're going to when I remember when we were first talking about the Gateway District, you know, of saying, oh, well, we're conforming all these things and making all these things to fit one property to one developer, and I I see this as a repeat of that, you know, it's either we're in agreement for what is an area or um, or this comes before us as an individual property to consider something different, but we're talking about the Gateway District. I, again, this is a workshop for the Gateway District. I don't think I think it's appropriate hearing about the concerns, you know, of certain properties there, but.
Yeah, I I think that what perhaps you need to consider is what your goal is for that block. Is it to um, allow the current uses to be improved with the current buildings as they are and to stay the way they are, or to push for those properties to be redeveloped according to a different vision, right? So those are two different goals and.
I'm sorry, Sarah, I don't want to interrupt you, but the rendering that they provide, that you provided on the on the PowerPoint looks like a beautiful apartment building. That could be housing very easily, what they're gonna do. That's housing.
Right.
So whether however it is that they want to use it.
It doesn't meet the, it doesn't meet the housing standard.
What do you mean it doesn't mean the the?
Because the size of the apartments is just not.
Can't you, and I and I guess, why can't you make instead of eighteen units, you make four units that meet the housing standard? Again, you know, but like, this is something that the owners bought the property without checking, you know, of what's allowed and and now we're creating these special conditions to meet, um, well, there's other ways to accomplish.
Or I guess so.
Or use the property.
Just just so for you to understand the perspective, I mean, the these, this property owner in particular is not a developer, right? But a developer coming in and looking at that property and saying, well, you know, okay, there are twenty tiny little apartments. I don't know, I I can't remember the name, uh, the the number that was there and they were really good standard and they were in pretty terrible condition from what I understand, but you know, um, they're, you know, twenty now, it that exceeds the maximum number that I could put today and I could put maybe two or three or maybe four better apartments. They will not be luxury apartments. Am I gonna, am I am I am I going to get a return on investment for that? Um, and and the likelihood is probably not. So, I mean, I think that you have to sort of look at it from the perspective of a a property or a a a buyer or a developer about whether it's viable.
Yeah, that's the thing, that unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately, they technically overpaid for the property. So now, going back to the actual possibility of what you could do there, it's never gonna be feasible at the price they paid, unless they made a huge adjustment on the price, nothing will be developed there. So we're looking for an alternative to be sure it stays, you know, at a.
I have a question.
I have a que- you know, with trying to change things to adjust to.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right.
Here's, here's my question, regardless of where you stand on it, right? Uh, it was in, it was an option that came up from CGA. It was brought before the board. The board had some suggestions of how it could work. This is not the place in this workshop to decide, okay? So then what is going to be the avenue for a decision to be made? Uh, it, if I had suggested, can we have, you know, at a meeting? Uh, hey, this is some a recommendation that was made from the boards and we could say no, or or does it have to be by way of a variance? Like, what what is the way forward for a decision to be made? That's my question. What is, what, how can a decision up or down be made? It could be no, but at least the decision was made. I'm not clear about because it it seems like if we don't clarify that, we're gonna leave here and then there's just continuing, gonna be a limbo. There was a recommendation made by the board and by CGA, um, so what? I feel, I don't, I don't understand. I get that the this isn't, the decision shouldn't be made today, but then when is it gonna be made?
We're not gonna vote on anything. That's why I'm saying this has to come to us at a meeting with a plan of, you know, and and Sylvia.
Is should direction be given to them to bring it before?
Any, any, you guys, I mean, the council can put any item on the agenda. You want to bring this item on the agenda, we'll put it on for the obviously not the Monday meeting, but the one after that or the one after that. So i- if if that's the direction, at least to have the discussion and like.
A discussion for the use, because housing it already is, so the discussion would be for the use of the property, right?
A conditional use.
Our direction to put that there, right? To change the the wording on our actual zoning.
Okay, let's let's have this. Sylvia, if you could work with JC and Roger and see, Roger, did you have something or Councilman?
Yeah, I I just, I wanted to, I wanted to sort of refocus the the conversation maybe that look, we're talking overall about the Gateway Overlay District here. We're not talking about a particular property or property owner, talking about uses um, and and an ordinance that would apply, you know, throughout the Gateway. I don't know that of, you know, looking at an or ordinance that is designed to apply district wide. The focus should be on a particular property, one for the or another, or even maybe, you know, one and two properties. Um, I think that's important to just keep in the back of our mind, um, as we discuss the uses that are appropriate for the Gateway Overlay District. I don't know if that provides clarity, but I do think it's important to step back and sort of, you know, remember.
Okay, so I think, let me ask you, Roger. Um, what we're trying to to come up with is for this particular project, and again, we're all in agreement, this is a workshop. We're looking at the big issue, so we're not gonna discuss this. We've discussed it way too much, I think, in detail as it is. Um, what do you suggest that Sylvia uh, works with the property? I don't know what else you can look at and brings it back to us as something for us to decide on this project? I mean, I I don't know what.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I I really don't have much, um, or or I would say anything.
What do you mean by that?
I in other words, I mean, I can, I can strongly tell them, look, you know, these are the uses that are permitted, which would all involve probably knocking down the building and starting from scratch, um, to for use that they are not seeking, right? So, um.
So usage.
But it's their decision, it's their decision, right? So.
So I guess there's there's two things that I can see here is, one of them is, this is what the property is allowed for.
Yeah.
You can build a four unit, whatever, or you can tear it down, you can read, you know, that's what you're allowed to do. If you want to ask for something differently, then come before us, asking, and would this be a variance? I don't.
No, because you can't do variance on usage, so what it could be, you know, it could be Santina and I put it on the agenda as as a discussion. It it gives us a little time to kind of just reflect on it, right?
We'll discuss.
And then we'll discuss it and 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 the agenda item could be, hey, let's have a discussion about a conditional use of this and then and then we don't have to talk about it anymore today, but at least.
All right, let's do that. All right, so let's do that if, um, that the, and I guess what the property owner.
Agreed.
Approach one of the council people and ask them, would you bring this up for a?
I mean, we can bring it up, I mean.
Or you can, right, if you if you feel that you want to bring it up for the property owner. All right, let's move forward with that and then we'll decide. I mean, it's not like the property can't be used. It has usage for it right now. It's consistent with what's allowed for every other one along that way. Um, you know, and, um, all right, so anything else that we want to give direction to Sylvia on the Gateway? Ordinance, any other questions? Sylvia, what do you need from us right now?
No, just, uh, to, um, sort of recap then, um, your direction on the three items that Councilman Fad had, uh, brought up is to go ahead and explore, uh, some kind of incentive for, uh, property assembly to be added to your bonus program. Or or otherwise, um, explore the different scenarios for potential expansion of the boundary. Um, the third one is the one that I wasn't entirely clear, uh.
Well, let me go back on the second one. I think it's either expansion or the other thing that we is elimination
Yeah.
of it with the, I liked what you said of of considering how to bring up all the CBD, not having an overlay district per se of just bringing up the whole CBD and and requiring, um, what did, what did you call it, um, improved?
Right.
Uh.
So actually, the third one wasn't really direction, right? You had written into the ordinance, the architectural uh, design change that would make it rather than just, it has to be Pueblo Mission, the different elements. If we do not disagree with that, then there's no, there's nothing to explore, right? But I'm, that was a rhetorical question. I don't know if if, is there anybody who disagrees with that?
Say it again.
Is there anybody who disagrees with the language in the ordinance cleanup where CGA, uh, recommended that we go from just making it a requirement to have Pueblo Mission style to what what, uh, the Vice Mayor read that there would be the design elements.
The architecture.
I I was in favor of it, all right? I'm not in disagreement with going forward with the the recommendations. I don't know if anybody else.
All right, and Sylvia, what else do you need? Just just to finish my summary, so I'm I'm going to sort of put a pin on the issue of the conditional use until you have a chance to review that or or think about it. Um, you did ask me to try and provide a little more clarity regarding, uh, the potential, um, need for rezoning that section and what the impact would be. Um, I'm almost certain that we may not want to rezone, but I I need to do a little bit more research into that. I mean, it it strikes me that it's a little weird that that is there, but there's a reason why. And if I have found, I I gotta go back, I don't remember exactly, but if 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 I find that the future land use is not in comply, and maybe it isn't, maybe I'm it's now coming back to me. Uh, that actually the future land use is the equivalent of the CBD and therefore that's what led me to believe that it was an oversight in changing the zoning to be consistent with that. I can look at that. That that would make the answer very easy, okay? So no problem. Is there, is there anything that I missed?
Don't forget my public wa- my public ways.
The what?
Separate permit, separate.
Oh, um, I would not put that as a specific language in there, I think, because through development agreement and through the review of the process, I think it has, it has to, I think it has to be um, on a case by case basis. I really do. So the development agreement is going to.
Clarify that, all right?
Yeah.
I've been a proponent of that, so that's good.
Yeah, I understand.
What else Sylvia, do you need from us? Do you?
That's all I needed.
Again, I think we're we're moving forward, really, um, good direction, fast pace, considering. And, um, even getting the workshops together are hard to fit into all our schedules, um. But thank you, um, you and your staff, um.
Thank you.
CGNA have been, um, just, uh, very, very, um, like Councilman Fad had said, um, you know, uh, bringing in a lot of new ideas, new possibilities and a structure and orderliness that we've probably, um, you know, because we're an older city and that happens with older cities, things have happened in the twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, sixties and, you know, and, um, trying to bring that, um, consistency and and cleaning up and housekeeping that we need, so.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Try and help you with that.
We're excited about the future. Anything else? Anyone? All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone.